Yeah.
Extra time? Yeah. You have to listen. Should be over there on your pile of paper. Yeah.
Listen.
First, I don't know you're here.
That's true.
We got four. No announcement.
I've got one.
Maybe in the refrigerator. This was just mine.
Oh. How do you tell me no worries?
Do you need a packet?
I do. I sent JB an email.
Uh, JB is out.
No.
We've got that for one.
Thank you.
It's like we thought about it.
We'll begin the meeting in just a few minutes.
You mean the black guy itself?
No, just get one hand.
Yes. Yeah. And how's the plan?
He's supposed to be coming.
Everybody did. Yes. Yep.
So do you want to go?
I thought that was a picture. I clearly thought that was a picture. Good evening. Welcome to the board of zoning assessment meeting for August from six twenty twenty five, where we hear cases for zoning variance application as well as appeals. Just to begin the process, I remind everybody that, correct me if I'm wrong, that the applicant will have an opportunity to present their case and they'll have five minutes to do that. Or is that five minutes to do that? We will deliberate and potentially make a decision. Members of the audience, interested people in the public, have the right to make a comment, a grievance, and welcome opportunities to hear from everybody in the community. And that's that. If you do plan to testify this evening, I will swear you all in as a group. So if you do plan to testify, please stand now. Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you provide is attributable to the best of your knowledge and belief? If so, say I did. I did good. I thank you so much. And I understand from Stafford, non preliminary matters only in a fields case.
Correct. Correct. We do have the one case that was withdrawn from the agenda.
Okay. I do not see anybody considering presenting the case.
It's the code enforcement officer here for the field.
Okay, so we'll call the appeal for case number BCA two five dash zero seven four.
Yeah. That was before.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we will hear from the appellate as well as the city code enforcement department. Is the appellate president?
Yeah.
The appellate for seventy eight nine Hobbit Road, BCA two five, as you were said in four. So. I mean, absent an appellate here, they they filed for the appeal, right?
Yeah.
So as an appellate, we also have. I mean, we can defer this for another first few cases, but we do the appeals cases that we all said. And it's a department. Did you hear from anybody?
Ever heard of the appellate? And it's a first for me.
Okay. Well, then you will give them a few minutes, you know, traffic and whatnot, and give them until five o'clock to appear. So we'll call you back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Which is the ARG case for withdrawal?
The withdrawal is case number eleven. BCA twenty five dash oh seven three for fifty seven fifty one Sovereign Street and twenty nine fifty nine West St. James Road.
Sorry, I can hold.
Yes, that case was determined by the residential zoning manager that they went, they applied for the wrong process. They should have applied for a constant variance. And that's what they were informed of before even submitting an application. So it wasn't caught until just recently. So they are now filing the CD instead.
Okay, so if you're yours to hear, a case of BCA two five dash zero seven three for fifty seven fifty one Sovereign Street and twenty five twenty nine fifty nine St. James Road, West St. James Road, that case will not be here, heard in this space this evening. So sorry for any inconvenience. So first case, four, six, seven, seven East Livingston Avenue. BCA two four dash one five two. I'll also remind everybody, once you have an opportunity, please sign the, sign in at the register of death. All right.
Thank you. Forty six, seven, seven East Livingston Avenue is located on the south side of East Livingston Avenue, approximately two hundred and twenty five feet east of Shitty Lane Road. It's part of the Mideast Area Commission and the existing zoning is Salm's suburban residential district. The point seventeen eight of site is currently developed with a single unit dwelling. Surrounding uses include a school to the north and some of the single unit lawns to the south, east and west. The applicant proposes to use a concrete pad to allow for maneuvering out of the front driveway and the construction of two new sheds. The applicant is requesting variances to allow maneuvering between the street right of way line and the parking setback line to reduce the required side yard from five feet to four feet from the east property line and to reduce the required rear yard from twenty five percent to nineteen percent. Planning is generally swerved about this proposal, but continue to request a street tree along Livingston Avenue is supported by the city forester. Columbus citywide planning policies, C two P two, sign guidelines recommend landscaping be used to support sold longer management and that street trees be provided as part of new development. As such, planning requests the addition of a street tree along Livingston Avenue with guidance from the city forester to mitigate the loss of green space. Division of Traffic Management does not have a position on extra maneuvering space upon the site, and the Mideast Area Commission has recommended approval, voting twelve to one in favor. City Department's recommendation is that of disapproval, however. Staffordman's disapproval as granting requested variance to maneuvering area would result in an entirely paved front yard that is inconsistent with the surrounding development pattern and the Livingston East Area Plan's recommendation that residential development will be compatible with the context in which it is located. The applicant has not provided a compelling reason for why such extensive maneuvering area is necessary. Thus, Stafford recommends disapproval. As such, we need to go through the Duncan standards, which I will do now to reflect the city's position here. Duncan stated one beneficial use without the variance. City believes that, yes, a code compliant driveway as featured on surrounding properties would still provide beneficial use without variance. Two, is the variance substantial? City's position is, yes, the entirety of the front yard would be paved and used for maneuvering, which is a drastic departure from the surrounding development pattern. Duncan standard three, essential character of the neighborhood altered. Yes, there is no similar example of property with a nearly entirely paved front yard in the surrounding neighborhood. For governmental service affected, no, it would not appear that the requested variances would impact delivery of governmental services. Five, knowledge of zoning restriction is unsure. We are unsure and we cannot determine as to whether the owner was aware of the zoning restriction when they purchased the property. Six, predicament feasibility without variance. Yes, the additional maneuvering area is not necessary as illustrated by other properties from East Livingston Avenue not needing such maneuvering area. Seven, spirit and intent and substantial justice. No, we do not. The cities do not believe that the variance to maneuvering area would be, would be consistent with the spirit and intent of the zoning requirement as the necessary amount of maneuvering area can be provided by a driveway similar to surrounding properties that does not have that turnaround. Check.
Thank you so much. Would you please provide your name and date of date, whether or not you'd be sworn?
Uh, yes. My name is Brian Sweeney and yes, I've been sworn.
Okay, thank you very much. Do you have an opportunity to plead your case?
Uh, yeah, I I think there was a bit of a misunderstanding with the the paving of the whole front yard. I think the owner is perfectly fine with the way it's paved now. He just wants it to be able to be used for maneuvering. Uh, it was the city that suggested, or at least we thought, that he paved the gravel area in the front there. I think he would rather not pave that area.
I can provide clarification there. So we, it would, given that there is existing gravel there, the the worry there is that if we leave that gravel, that that would be used for maneuvering and that we do not want gravel tracked into the right of way. So the options were to get rid of the gravel or place some sort of bollards or structure to prevent any vehicles from crossing from that paved area into the gravel or again to pave over the gravel if you want that to be part of the maneuvering area. That might have been a point of confusion.
Okay, what if that was to be turned into landscaping?
If that was to be turned into landscaping, we can go back to zoning and the rest of the commenters to see if that does change the position.
Okay, so that would make us have to re come through all this.
It may not be a surprise. Let me just say this. Well, I'm looking at it's code compliant. Anything there?
I mean, technically, this can remain as is, but you couldn't use that for maneuvering. That would have to be like, again, like a patio or something. You couldn't, you know, back out a car and do that sort of thing. Couldn't park any cars there either.
Right. So are they here as a result of a zoning violation or a violation?
Originally, yes.
Okay. I mean, because this is, this is an opportunity. Frank is seeking to unpack this whole thing. When this house went up, it was code compliant. But I have an area ish in terms of our green spaces, et cetera, and you have diminished on what I can see more of that. So I can really hear cases to why.
Uh, why it's been, the green space has been diminished?
Why do we need that much maneuverability space? You need, like literally, you could back a car into a one car equivalent lane and drive right back out for maneuverability, yet you have what almost looks like a four car cab.
Yeah, I'm not one hundred percent sure why that much space was paid for that reason.
Excuse me.
But.
Sorry. I'll help him out. I'm the owner for the building.
My name is Jenny Gane.
Have you been sworn?
Yes, please.
Go ahead.
Okay, so as you can see, right off the driveway, it leads you straight to the main street. Okay, that is, that is a huge danger. And I mean, it's happened twice already trying to back out to that main street. Now, if you have cars parked on this side of the driveway, let's say both sides of the driveway, you're going to need more than just one car space for you to back out to be able to drive out. That is why that space is a little bit bigger, just to allow room for maneuver in case there's another car parked right, right by it.
I'm understanding, but is that all you have to say or?
Oh, yeah, just to explain why it's bigger.
Okay, you mean the existing, why not all that you've done already?
That is correct. So, so right in front of the garage, if you have two cars parked, there's no way that the first one closer to the house will be able to maneuver and get out easily.
Okay.
Pretty much.
Okay, thank you. Please be sure to sign the sheet there.
Okay.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak for, against the proposal as presented? Okay, board members.
Question.
What are we voting on now? Someone could be clear.
To make a legitime, I mean.
It'd be to allow maneuvering between the street wide driveway line and the parking setback line. There was also the minimum side yard in your yard for sheds, city bed and rear yard, which are shown on the side plan here, right there and there. But the main item that is a concern for zoning is you had a large paved area.
It was part of the pavement removed. Cause I have a photo on my phone that shows more of how green out there.
Oh. That's interesting. Am I going wrong, right?
Oh, that's next door. That's another house. You're talking this?
No, here. Oh, that's shady. Oh, there's gravel on the edge. See? Here. The photo looks like that's paved.
Yeah.
Yes.
Looks.
Was that paved and then one one time and torn off?
No, this is how it's been from day one.
Uh, what's the date on this?
So it is, it is currently gravel in this area?
No, no, this is how it looks. No, no, this is how it looks. Right, even as it now.
Right there.
Yes, please.
This clearly should, you don't have a date on it. This is clearly showing like a fully paved area. It doesn't even like show that it could be below.
Okay.
Yeah.
And let's pull that up.
Regardless, it's.
Well, I guess what I'm back to is if that was landscaping. Right now, it's gravel.
He's testified that it's for maneuverability and not landscaping.
Don't say.
Love it. It's gotta be nice to.
Yes, if I could essentially direct here as far as, I guess, to that, uh, if you have this consideration of this application, there was a request to have a condition that the previous access point, East Livingston Avenue, be removed, which is just off the page there. So that there may have been, that may have been part of an original.
I guess.
Depending if that aligns with where the previous driveway was located on the.
Combined.
Previously to previous structure.
But it looks like it's been paved in the corner of that. The driveway apron.
Yes. Can't decide that if that was, that was the comfort that we had. If there's any condition, any approval on that driveway being.
Okay. Are there any other questions from the board members while we get to the sound?
See that neighbor? There's gravel. That's good. It's no. No, it's no concrete.
Yeah, I believe that's gravel.
It's gravel.
Nah. But I think it's a moot issue. Well, it's over there.
No, it's the ground.
So it should be the same.
It's gravel.
Looks gravel there.
It was as of July, July twenty twenty five. Now you're talking about twenty four.
That's the driveway right there. Come back one more. That's the original driveway.
Well, that looks like that might be.
That's the original driveway.
Oh, I saw.
And that's what you requested be removed and that it has been removed.
And that looks like gravel. I mean, the apron in the right away does not appear to be, at least based on that Google Street sheet.
And does that?
Uh, in the public right, here's still.
It was more until.
I see it there now. I think, yeah, I think it's a moot point. Gravel is not permitted.
And it's gonna be maneuvering on your house as a parking surface or a moving surface.
Yeah.
Should be careful. We bring it in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other questions? The applicant or staff?
I don't have any questions, Mr. Chair. I think I'm probably with you on this one.
Okay. Okay, anyone here to vouch? Following down with the news, will benefit from use without variance by this? The answer is yes. Is there, is there any substantial? On the surface, it is not here substantial, but if you look at the totality of the project since it was constructed, it is substantial to add some additional gravel or hard surface space. Essential character of the neighborhood altered. It will continue to be further altered with this variance if it were to be approved. Will it affect government services? I don't expect that it will. Knowledge of zoning restriction, I certainly can't say that you knew earlier before you purchased the property, but I would argue that post construction, you were fully aware of what the zoning restrictions were and are. Predicament feasibly obvious without variance. Their challenge, probably not based on the size of home that they built and the number of drive by cars that they expect to have in the driveway. But it seems like it's self imposed. Spirit and intent since substantial justice being done, I have the grant that the variance would be granted. I think no. With that, I'll call or I'll see if anyone wants to call the question. Chair. Are we voting on all four variants? Are we taking your variants separately? I am considering all of the three variances here. There are three, right? The three variances together. I can ask the applicant if you want to separate them.
Now, would it be possible to separate the maneuvering from the?
You could agree when you want. So as to, and again, I don't think that the Duncan factors were any differently for me. And my colleagues can certainly chime in if they have any differences, but you're saying that you want to allow maneuvering between the street right of way line and the parking setback line.
It's basically so people don't have to back out onto the road.
Yeah, I'm processing that. And I can appreciate that. Um. If we do that.
Mm hmm.
And it have some, some guardrails. In other words, can it be like a nine foot wide space rather than saying the entire area is maneuverability? Does that make sense?
Yeah, like limit the size of the, the turnaround path.
Correct.
Yeah, it could be a condition that you add.
And, and so from traffic standpoint, what would be reasonable to maneuver one vehicle in and then back out? So that nine foot wide space?
Sure, maybe it could be limited to a nine by eighteen foot area for maneuvering, like a standard parking space.
Okay, I'll say that would be reasonable for maneuverability. Would you be interested in that?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so that would be a condition for this. And so, um, does anyone want to call the question with the condition specifically to three, three, one, two point two five maneuvering?
I'll call the question, including maneuverability states.
Question's been called. Please call.
Mr. Chair, can I ask one question prior to the vote? What is the current pad size now? It's already paved.
Yeah.
Twenty, it looks like, yeah, twenty feet or twenty two feet. So that would be a substantial reduction.
Are we saying that there would need to be removed?
Yeah, that the pad would need to be reduced to a nine by eighteen size.
And you guys comfortable with that?
Yeah, I mean, if that's the only solution, yeah.
Okay. Just want to be clear. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And so could there be an addition to include the driveway in the right way to be removed? Yes, and we won't include that.
Do you understand that?
Yeah, I believe that was already a condition in there.
Okay, just want to make sure that you're both clear. The question's been called. Please call the roll. Is it logged?
So I'm sorry, I don't have the question, so I apologize. I was going. Okay, let's go back. Um. So this is just the maneuvering areas, right? We're not talking about thirty three, thirty two point twenty six and thirty three, thirty two point twenty seven.
Correct, and we are, we are on the maneuvering with the limitation of the limited space.
So I'm not enough agree with the chair's analysis of the Duncan factors and disagree with the variance.
Mr. Malika?
Um, based on the reduced size of the turnaround. Oh, yes.
Mr. Waddley?
I agree with Mr. Malika that based off the conditions that have been put forth, that also with the chair's analysis of the Duncan factors, I am voting yes for safety.
Chair Jones? Yes, that variance is granted with the conditions as presented. Pretending to request three, 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 two point two six and three, 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 two point two seven. Would anyone like to call a question?
Mr. Chair, can I ask some questions about these two, given the fact that it looks like they're still an existing garage? If the concept is to reduce the yards for the purposes of constructing sheds. Curious based off the pictures, what the old garage is being used for? Do I see an old garage?
This house was, this house was built recently.
Can we go back to that street view? Yes. So if I look at the driveway, it looks like it's going into that building that's setting to the right of. Is that somebody else's? Okay.
They basically built a home.
Yeah.
That took up most all of the green space based on its footprint and left them with, without enough to be able to do what they're proposing to do here.
I understand. I just thought that driveway went back into.
Yeah.
So.
Does anyone want to call the question?
I'll call question.
Question's been called. Please call the roll. Mr. Malika?
Based on the Duncan factors, I feel this is appropriate. Parents, so I vote yes.
Mr. Waddley?
I agree. I think these are lesser concerns than the maneuvering. So based on the Duncan factors, I'll split this.
The second law?
I like ways based on Duncan factors, find that the variances are not substantial. Um, and approve the variances.
Chair Jones? Oh, yes, the answer is fresh. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Case BCA two four dash one six five for eleven oh six Cold Street. BCA two four dash one six five for Cold Street.
Uh, poor, sorry for going into the power of attorney for the showing. Uh, this is issued last week. He's allowed to speak for the conference.
Thank you.
Um, eleven oh six Cold Street, located at the northeast corner of Cold Street and Oakwood Avenue. It's owned or three residential in part of the Near East Area Commission. The site is not developed, surrounding uses a primary single and multi-universal residential with a seventy two sap. Uh, the applicant proposes construct a single unit dwelling. Variances are being requested to reduce the required parking spaces from two to one, to reduce division clearance number from ten to ten feet by ten feet to six feet by inches by six feet by inches, to reduce lawn width from fifty feet to forty feet and area from five thousand square feet to one thousand, excuse me, three hundred square feet to increase maximum lawn coverage from fifty percent to sixty five percent, to reduce the building setback running from ten feet to one feet three inches, to reduce the maximum side yard from eight feet five inches to five feet eight inches, to reduce the metal side yard from five. to reduce the metal side yard from five feet to, uh, ten inches to four feet on the west side, and from five feet ten inches to five feet eight inches on the east side, and to reduce the rear yard from twenty-five percent to three percent. Planning in full support, staff note that the revised site plan shows the garage access reoriented toward Grover Alley, consistent with Near East Area Claims, designing outlines, therefore planning in full support. Division of Traffic Management has no comments and the Near East Area Commission approves approval with a vote of eleven to one. Staff recommend approval as the requested variance are typical for infill development on construction lots and local neighborhoods. The proposal is consistent with the Near East Area Claim and the dwelling design maintains the residential claim if you can't receive.
Thank you very much. Would you please provide your name and indicate whether or not you've been sworn?
Kelton Waller, and yes, I've been sworn.
Okay. Is there no condition to stamp the site plan? Why not?
I don't make that a condition.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to add? You have the recognition of acceptance from the city staff as well as your commission.
Uh, no, I don't believe I'll be adding anything else unless there are any questions.
Okay. Is there anyone here to speak in favor or against this case as presented? Seeing here none, any questions from board members? So regarding the Duncan factors, would there be beneficial use without the variance? I would say there could be. Is the variance substantial? Not as it's being presented. The essential character of the neighborhood alters a little slightly because this neighborhood has not yet moved to a space of alley-fronting, alley-fronting properties as some of the other nearby neighborhoods have. Knowledge of the zoning restrictions, I can't say with certainty. Governmental services affected, I would say no. But this predicament fee would be outbid without the variance, I would say I would do not. Is the spirit and intent and substantial justice done by granting the variance, I would say yes. Would anyone like to call a question?
I'll call the question.
Question's been called, please call the roll. Ms. Waddley?
I agree with the chairman's assessment of the Duncan factors, but yes.
Ms. Egglehaw?
I likewise agree with the chairman's assessment of Duncan factors, and vote yes.
Ms. Malika?
I concur with the chair as well, and I would yes.
Chair Jones? Yes, their name is great, please be sure to sign it. Congratulations.
Thank you.
BZA24-169 for 473 Jackson Street.
473 Jackson Street is located on the south side of Jackson Street, approximately fifty feet west of Beach Street. It's part of the Columbus South Side Area Commission and the existing zoning is R2F Residential District. The point twelve acre site is currently developed with a single unit dwelling and detached garage. Surrounding uses include similar single unit blocks to north, south, east and west. Applicant proposes to split the existing lot and introduce several lots. The north lot will retain existing single unit dwelling, while detached garage on the resulting south lot will be demolished along future development of the single unit dwelling. The applicant requests variances to reduce the number of street parking spaces from two to zero for the north lot, reduce the square footage for a lot in the R2F district from six thousand square feet to two thousand six hundred and five square feet for the north lot and two thousand six hundred and six square feet for the south lot. Reduce their part of the west side yard from three feet to two feet, three point five inches for the north lot and one foot six inches for the existing garage on the south lot. Reduce the building setback from ten feet to eight point three feet for the north lot. Reduce the minimum width for a lot from fifty feet to twenty-seven feet for road lots and to allow a south lot to front an alley. Planning supports this proposal. Columbus Citywide Planning Policies, C2P2 Design Guidelines state the appropriateness of infill development be measured in terms of height, width, setbacks and lot coverage. The proposal will legitimize existing conditions that are compatible with the surrounding neighborhood consisting with C2P2 Guidelines. Staff concur with the applicant's statements in support and therefore are supportive. The Division of Traffic Management has no comments and the Columbus South Side Area Commission has recommended disapproval, voting zero to ten for the parking reduction and four to six for all other variances. City Department's recommendation, however, is for approval. Staff recommends approval as the majority of the variances are to legitimize existing conditions. Furthermore, the lot split will result in a greater housing density, which is in line with the city's goal of providing more housing availability and the reduced parking is mitigated by the walkable nature of the surrounding neighborhood and the existence of street parking options. We do recommend the following condition, however, that the existing garage shall be demolished. Chair.
Thank you very much. Please provide your name and indicate whether or not you've been sworn.
Good evening, my name is David Kujini, and yes, I have been sworn.
Okay. You are the attorney for the applicant, I don't see the note.
That's correct.
Why is your name not listed?
I, um, came on this after she, the, the application had already been filed, which is probably why it's not listed, but I've been working with Mr. Kirk on this.
Do you have evidence from the owner? I'm trying to, did you file a power of attorney?
I don't know that I filed a power of attorney. Uh, I know that she's been on some emails back and forth.
True, and I can't speak to that, yes. Okay, we'll take your, your word here as you're under oath.
Absolutely.
That you do represent and can be found.
Sure.
Uh, as well as the honor of this property for any decision that is made.
Absolutely.
You understood that we heard previous case and we allowed them to separate the, um, the request for a vote. Are you interested in doing that here?
No, my understanding is that with, uh, you know, with staff and planning being in support, we want to keep everything together, so.
Okay, well, that's one decision.
Sure.
It's like the commission makes a decision
Sure.
and we make the final decision.
Sure.
Okay. Is there anything that you'd like to add about this case?
I would, um, I, you know, um, I appreciate, uh, the, we, my client appreciates the approval from uh, staff and planning and, um, she's, you know, worked hard to try and make sure that, uh, everything that they've asked for has been accounted for in this. I will say she is sympathetic to, uh, what the area commission has brought up regarding the parking spaces. There's not a lot of parking, she gets that. It is, however, an area right by the hospital where, you know, density is supported and, um, we'd like to move forward, understanding and again, being entirely sympathetic to that, uh, you know, that area commission was not happy about the parking.
So sympathetic, but without a solution.
That, correct, yes, yeah.
Okay, anything else?
Nope.
Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak for or against this proposal as presented?
Yeah.
Please step forward. Would you please provide your name and indicate whether or not you've been sworn?
I've been sworn, my name is Gary Stolfoth.
Thank you.
I'm Secretary of the Schumacher Place Civic Association, and I'm going to ask if you vote against, uh, this application.
Okay.
On the first go-round for this application, my civic association and Southside Area Commission voted against. And it was at the April BZA meeting, you voted to table the application, you instructed the applicant to return with a plan showing what she planned to build on that new lot. And in response to that, she submitted a site plan that shows a footprint for a proposed uh, two-story frame home and a parking area, but there are no side elevations, there are no architectural drawings for this, so we still don't know what it is, you know, she plans to build there. It doesn't even say whether it's going to be a single family or possibly even a double.
So are you're now, we, that, that's not within our purview, architectural review?
Yes.
That may be something that's part of Schumacher. So if you specifically, there are one, two, three, four, five, six variances here. How would you speak directly to or against the, uh, the parking variance? Is there any other variance that you want to vote? Or does she would suggest that we, um?
Well, I think any variances that would allow for the lot split to occur, that's what I'm speaking against. You know, I, um, as I said, we still don't know, well, what would allow the variances to occur without knowing what is going to happen to the new lot? When the Southside Area Commission on, at the July meeting, again, voted on the revised application with the site plan, uh, they were unanimously, they voted unanimously against it, and the reason was because there's no plan for what's going to happen to this new lot. At the same meeting, uh, the applicant's attorney stated that indeed the applicant has, you know, she doesn't intend to build anything on the rear lot uh, and that submitting this plan was just one of the hoops she had to jump through so that you would approve the application, and then once that happened, she would sell the existing single-family home. She would demolish the existing two-car garage in the rear and put a vacant lot up for sale. And I really hope that doesn't happen. Um, I've spoken to members of my civic association about this and at least three of the commissioners. And we think that allowing somebody to split a lot with no plans for the future development. And then, you know, we think that's a really bad idea, not just for Schumacher Place, but for all the South Side neighborhoods. And, you know, that's, so I guess it's the variances that are going to let this happen, the reduced lot size, you know, it's extremely substandard lot. You know. I guess that's my reasons. I, I, I ask that you, you know, vote against this because it's a really bad precedent. In forty years, I've lived in Schumacher Place, and I went back and looked at all the lot splits we've had for the years. They've all had plans with them and these new structures and things have been built. And, okay, that's one thing, but, uh, what we were told that the plan is to sell, you know, to vacate the rear lot and just sell that with nothing? It's a bad idea.
Okay, thank you. Would you please be sure to sign with us?
Sure.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak for or against this proposal as presented? Okay, do you want to comment or have anything?
I would like to respond, yes. Um. Respectfully, um, my recollection of the July meeting was, was quite different and, and a majority, a lion's share of the uh, discussion was about the design. Um, and so, again, as, you know, you mentioned, this is not a, a review board. Uh, of course, now, we're not here presenting any record of that meeting, but, um, I can tell you that it's, it's deemed uh, from having been present at that meeting, that most of the opposition was related to design, which, you know, admittedly is not, you know, what's in question here. Um, so, that's my response.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board members?
Um, I may have to witness, are you your chair?
Yes.
Um, so in the hardship statement, the applicant states that the parcel size in the area with this lot split going from six thousand feet to two thousand six oh five and six oh six for each one um, is basically common in the area, but then I thought I heard you say that the lot size, the size is not common in the area.
Well, no, I will say that, you know, there are other, like, property right next door with two condos on it is on of, you know, a, a lot size, it's very similar to what would happen if this lot were split, but and others on the street, but that's around those condominiums, relatively new developments. There wasn't a lot split involved in that project or any of these others up and in the street. I don't know exactly when those lots became very small, but it was not because of some recent desire to increase housing density in the area. They've been that way for a long time and people have, if I'd honestly built some, yeah, you know, there's some odd things coming up along South Lane that, that don't sell and things like that, but that's not your, that's not your values.
Thank you.
I understand that, but, you know, yeah.
Any other questions from board numbers or the applicant? Or witnesses? Seeing here none, we'll address the Duncan factors. Will there be beneficial use without the variance? Absolutely. Is the variance substantial? Arguably, yes, the numbers are substantial. Would the essential character of the neighborhood be altered? I think it would be altered, but not extremely. Government services affected? Not specifically, no. Knowledge of zoning restriction? Can't say whether or not the owner or applicant was aware of the zoning restrictions prior to purchase, but they certainly have been at deliberations that continue. Predicament feasibly obvious without a variance? Absolutely, because the predicament, predicament is self-imposed here and not necessary at all. Would the spirit and intent and substantial justice be done by granting the variance, and I would argue no. That being said, would anyone like to call a question? Another question, question's been called, please call the roll. Ms. Egglehaw?
Well, based on the chair's analysis of the Duncan factors and taking all the variances together to knock out the variances.
Mr. Malika?
And I've, based on the factors that I'm seeing here and what I've seen next door, I'm going to vote yes.
Ms. Waddley?
Um, based on the Duncan factors, if the chairman is aligned, I might agree with. I will vote yes, but I will say that I am concerned about parking and, um, removal of the two spaces is, is big. Um, but for this variance, I would say yes.
Chair Jones? No, the variance is denied. Page BZA25-030 for 6285 Cleveland Avenue.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
BZA25-030 for 6285 Cleveland Avenue. It's located on the west side of Cleveland Avenue, approximately forty feet north of Community Park Drive. It's owned CAC Community Activities Center. The site is currently developed with an eating and drinking establishment. Surrounding uses include a cake box, retail store and accessory parking lot to the north and west. An eating and drinking establishment to the south and an office building to east. The applicant proposes to raise the eating and drinking establishment and develop the site for the car wash. Variances are being requested to provide a pedestrian entrance on the Cleveland, not provide a pedestrian entrance on the Cleveland Avenue side of the building to increase the maximum permitted building setback from twenty-five feet to eighty feet, to reduce total length of the building facade from sixty percent to nineteen percent, to reduce the minimum amount of transparency for a non-residential building from sixty percent to nineteen percent, to allow car wash seating and two parking spaces and drive-by slash aisle maneuver, maneuvering between the principal building and Cleveland Avenue, and to permit truck maneuvering off-site but within a large parking lot servicing a dumpster box at the southwest corner of the site. Planning, uh, sorry, I could, you guys updated planning comments? Sorry, I guess I handed one of my copies away. Remember that it's a draft. Uh, we got the official page. Sorry. Sir, I've updated planning comments. Uh, standard new proposal, and this will be added within a total of three four districts. For any need to maintain alignment within staff direction, within the health policy direction established by municipal, remote, and immediate health management. Staff provides a higher level scrutiny of variance requests in this area in addition to adopting the dangerous plan and design guidelines. Therefore, staff requested, request the proposed eight-foot-told wall be revised to a low wall with black metal tube fencing for consistency with Northland Plan, Northland Area Plan Design Guidelines and Title 34 standards. Staff know the enhanced landscaping and additional street trees shown are consistent with plan design guidelines. All division and traffic management comments have been addressed. Uh, the Northland Community Council recommends approval of this request and staff is recommending disapproval based on the following Duncan standards. Beneficial use without variance? Yes. Beneficial use without variance? Yes, the site itself is zero point eight yard tempers. With the Cleveland Avenue frontage being a hundred fifty five feet long, which could easily accommodate a code compliant building. Location and design. Is there a substantial? Yes, increasing the maximum building setback from twenty five feet to eighty feet is substantial. The intent of the CAC district is to provide a medium to large, a maximum of ten to twenty five feet. Setback, reducing the minimum length of the building facade along Cleveland Avenue from sixty percent to nineteen percent is substantial. Reducing the minimum amount of transparency for a non residential building from sixty percent to nineteen percent is substantial, but could be supported given the use. And if that were to be compliant with the building location and design. Allowing car wash staffing and one parking space between. The principal building and Cleveland Avenue is not substantial, given the amount proposed landscaping. Three, essential character of the neighborhood altered. As the neighborhood exists currently, the character would not be altered. However, the goal of bringing the site into. To Community Activity Center is to evolve the character of the area into a mixed use. And walkable environment. New development should reinforce pedestrian and transit access. Governmental services affected? No. Knowledge of zoning restrictions? Yes. Predicament feasibility without variance? No. Predicament in question is the size and proposed placement of the building and the presence of access easements that the neighboring property has granted. To this property and unwillingness to revise. Because the proposed building is on the standard design for this particular brand of car wash, it cannot be constructed in a code compliant manner, i.e. oriented north. South. Spirit and intent and substantial justice? No, spirit and intent of the new adopted code, which is. Which again is to evolve the character into a. Mixed use and walkable environment that reinforces pedestrian and transit access is being dismissed out of inconvenience rather than hardship. Staff is requesting a condition that the applicant will commit to the standard landscape plan.
Okay, would you please provide your means of indicating whether or not you've been sworn?
Uh, my name is Dave Perry. I'm a consultant to Mumu Express Car Wash and I have been sworn.
You have a opportunity. Uh, yes, I have.
Okay. You were here previously. And we're all the board members here when they presented originally?
That they were not.
They were not. Okay. Feel free to add anything that you'd like, uh, and if you can highlight for me what you've done differently.
Yes, sir.
Um, can we digress for just one moment? I, I didn't quite follow Stephen's comment about the wall. That's the first, this moment is the first I've heard that.
Lowering any comment?
Yes.
Staff note the proposal is located within a Title thirty four district. Accordingly, to maintain alignment with the policy direction established by city council to promote walkable and mixed use development. Staff applies a higher level of scrutiny to variance requests in these areas. In addition to adopting land use plan and design guidelines. Therefore, staff request the proposed eight foot wall be revised to a low wall. With black metal tube fencing for consistency with Northland Area Plan Design Guidelines and Title thirty four standards. Staff know the enhanced landscaping and additional street trees shown are consistent with plan design guidelines.
Okay, we, we were not aware of that comment about the proposed wall and provisioned of black metal fencing until this moment.
Are you capable of responding to that?
Sure.
Yeah.
We'll go over a few things since last night, so thank you. Um, I acknowledge that the CSE zoning or what has been said multiple times that it's a mixed use. Walkability pedestrian friendly, so we did have needs for city staff to really get an understanding of what is pedestrian friendly. Um, just outside of our particular use. Um, it seemed as though street front building, buildings to create a walkable path, which we do believe you are creating a walkable path. Um, very nice walkable path with the abundant landscaping. The intention of the wall we proposed, uh, the eight foot wall. Was as a result of that conversation with city staff and it was, what is pedestrian friendly? So I understand what the city is looking for to be pedestrian friendly. So a street front building would block headlights. And sound. I guess you could argue one side would put a bunch of buildings, street front, it could be an amplification of sound. But we believe the landscaping, abundant landscaping creates the sound buffer and then the eight foot wall. Would block any headlights. Uh, we do, we do close at eight P M. So in the summer months, that wouldn't apply. Cause of daylight. So it's really the winter months for the two or three hours in the winter. But we believe that wall, uh, very. Nice wall would block sound and light and act as a building along Cleveland Avenue with a walkway that we would install a sidewalk to do so. Um, I, I did want to note, um, so outside again of our use, just for the members who weren't here, this, this property, do you mind, can we go to the aerial, please? So that's great. So the outline of the property you see in that blue is, are the actual property lines. Not to be confused with how the O'Charlies utilize the property. So the areas outside, you can see the pavement differences. So to, to the eye from someone looking from Google Earth would assume that. That lot is all of O'Charlies and that's what we have to work with as far as frontage. A hundred and fifty five feet of frontage stated is the blue line. Outside of that, there are easements in place between Home Depot. And a separate private property owner which owns this property, this parcel. Um, there are restrictions on that property, but in addition to the restrictions, there are easements which allow for non exclusive. Parking. So both users and users, whoever owns the properties are permitted to use that as parking. Um, and obviously ingresses, egresses included in that as well. Um, the restrictions in addition to the property lines that, so your hundred and fifty feet of frontage on Cleveland are. You are only allowed, permitted to build one building on this property. And so the, the spirit of the code is a mixed use. Uh, development, but that is impossible, not because of our use, it is just impossible because of the restrictions in place on the property. In addition to that, um, one building, that building can only be seven thousand feet or less. Um, and no higher than twenty one feet in height. So again, I only say that to really emphasize the fact that. A mixed use development is impossible on this parcel. Because of those agreements prior to us, and that's any user who comes, again, not specific to the car wash. Um, specifically to a car wash, we did discuss, uh, we clarified with staff on, on why it's not that we don't want to present. Position ourselves along Cleveland Avenue and run parallel with Cleveland Avenue. It's that for specific to a car wash use to enter the building. You need forty feet to safely, especially when you're turning to safely enter the building, get the rear tires onto the conveyor. And thirty feet after you exit the building, for, once the vehicle is off conveyor to then be able to turn. Those are the minimums we work with for safe navigation. Uh, that would only allow us to build an eighty five foot building. Which in turn, we would be here anyways asking for variance because we need, you have to build ninety five feet. Along the hundred and fifty five feet of frontage to meet the sixty percent. Coverage of the street frontage. So regardless, we would have to be here for a variance, even if we said, sure staff, we can build an eighty five foot building, we would need a variance. That's why transition to. Well, the wall acts as a building and the height we picked. Is higher than, well, anybody that I know, but in addition to that, the landscaping would. Uh, would grow, the intention is that it would grow above that as well and create this beautiful buffer that you can walk along. Uh, and have a great walking environment and we believe we are an amenity to the community. I think that can be stated with the community group. In full support, unanimously supporting, um, our development. Those are the points I wanted to point out. Um, Dave, if you have more, I'll just kind of gather my thoughts.
If I could add real quick, uh, by pedestrian friendly, staff needs having the building closer to the sidewalk and building design that encourages pedestrian activities. Which the wall and this building design do not.
And I would, I would also just note that our use is a permitted use.
It is a permitted use and the, the con, the, the pedestrian friendly and walkable. Um, it, it may apply in lots of areas of Northland, but we're not here to repeat those areas, but. Look at this site. This is a seven or eight lane arterial intersection. Adjacent to an interstate freeway interchange. With an auto, auto oriented use and a highly auto dependent use Home Depot. The, we're, we're adding sidewalk, the city, I mean, we're obligated to do sidewalk, city asks for sidewalk, we're making a connection to the existing sidewalk. Um, the pedestrian friendly has got to be taken in the context of the site. Are there other, other areas of Northland where that would apply more? Um, sure, sure there is, but not here.
Question for you. How far north of your site does the, does the sidewalk go?
It's the, the frontage of the proposed car wash site.
It's not on our property line because that, that's our property.
And north of your property, uh, continuing parallel to the Home Depot parking lot. It next meets the exit rate. Is that correct?
It is a ramp, yes, and it's. And, um, the L A right away is, is that's to there also.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And I just wanted to tag on to his comment regarding vehicles that I noted in the, when it was rezoned. Um, it was actually noted that this is a high vehicle traffic corridor.
Yes, Mr. Blackstone.
We just prepared to answer any questions.
I like that proactive.
So, so with the. The, the Mumu proposal of adding an eight foot brick wall is very substantial and heavy landscaping and. The, the landscaping has been complemented by, by staff. It's an effort to. To, uh, screen the activity. Um, the, it's an effort to screen the activity and provide that buffer to the pedestrian activity. We should, we should review Duncan standards also, Mr. Chairman. And I know you will when you vote, but, uh, we would like to comment on that.
You can comment now.
Yeah, okay. Um, okay, uh, site is, uh, point eight nine acres. Uh, for, um, Ms. Agelhoff and Mr. Malacca, they were not here for some of the previous meetings. Um, as stated, the site does not have access to Cleveland, the parcel, the rectangle fronts on Cleveland, but it is, um. At the intersection and L A right away, it cannot have access to Cleveland. And it does not front on Community Park. That row of parking is part of the Home Depot parcel. The site is, is dependent on Home Depot. For existing easements and for access to the site and. Look at what this site is entering on, a gigantic parking lot for a mega retailer. With a, with an auto oriented use. Nobody, nobody walks or bikes to Home Depot.
But a question for you, not so alter space. Your point in the south of your site is park, a row parking. What is the plan for that? Because you're going to have something that would make those non compliant parking spaces, I'm sure.
No. No, there, uh, there will be a drive off chair that allows those vehicles to enter and exit safely and our staff line is actually north of that with a, with a separator. Between there, so you'd be able to navigate that drive out safely, separate from our car wash.
The road, the row of parking belongs to Home Depot and the maneuvering spaces, remove, maneuvering area for those spaces belongs to Home Depot. That depiction of the line is, is a little aggressive relative to the parking spaces, but. At the property line, the south property line at Mumu, there will be a curve and they don't, it does not affect the Home Depot parking.
Thank you. Thank you.
So I guess a bit of clarification, I believe, there's some. The site lines that are shown in the staff, that, I guess, that does not reflect the approved layout. The, the renderings actually show a, and what's. Mr. Perry is referring to as far as separated. So I guess I just want to make sure that's clear that. There, there's been discussion. Um, maybe there's another rendering that's better to the other. That there.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure we've. The renderings reflect that, I, that's, that's an old black and white. So there will be a curve.
On the left side, Chad, the light gray area is the drive out to the parking and then you see that. Concrete island.
Thanks. Updated one?
Oh, yeah. Yes, sir.
Yes.
And I also know we're missing, mentioning one of the restrictions is that. You're only allowed one user within the building, so you can't, it can't even be a multi commercial user. Only one business is permitted to operate out of one building.
We're going to take your testimony here today, uh, as, as the truth. Uh, based on the things that obviously we're not privy to with the restrictions.
So. And I do have the reciprocal easement chair, uh, and operation agreement.
Okay, thanks, man.
Okay, it's a very substantial. If, on the surface, it appears to be by the numbers, but, um. The, the, it, it has to, variances has to be taken in the context of the proposal. Um, because the, the suggestion of, of that section of whether it's substantial or not, the, the suggestion is. Can anything at all be, be built on the property without a variance or with a minor variance? And that, that, that is not the standard. The question is, um, in the context of this, given the site characteristics, given. Given, uh, the length of the building, this is a common length of a tunnel car wash, um, in, in July, Jamie Freeze, who unfortunately is not here. So he, he thought the wash, this wash does fit north south and it does not. We had a webex with. With, um, with Joe and the civil engineer and myself, uh, after the July DZA meeting and Jamie acknowledged the building does not fit north south. So, uh, whether it's substantial or not has to be taken in the context of the proposal. Essential character of the neighborhood. Um, staff has acknowledged that, um. As the neighborhood currently exists, it would not be altered. It's a, it's a highly auto centric. Neighborhood and for the reasons I stated previously, um, it's going to remain that. There, this isn't just a matter of. Of, of whether this site or in thirty years, the Home Depot site redevelops. This is an interstate interchange with eight lanes. Okay, government service is affected? No, I think we can all agree on that. Um, knowledge of zoning restriction. The property owner, the question on the city forum is whether the property owner knew of the restriction, the property owner did not. Um, obviously Mumu did, or we, we wouldn't be here, um, after due diligence was done on. Vetting the site, uh, with Mumu and the civil engineer and myself, the, the variances were identified, so, but the property owner did not. To build a, to build a car wash, and this is to my point. Of the feasibility without variance, the test can't be just whether anything at all can be built without a variance. Cause the, cause board members, the answer to that. The answer to that question and. The variance is very substantial is, is always going to be. You, you will always find that it's substantial and. And, um, the fee, and, and the feasibility issue, you will always find that unless it's taken in the context. If, if the question is that can anything at all be built without variance? Um, and without being substantial, the answer will always be yes, and you, you can't evaluate proposals, proposals in that context. Okay, spirit of intent. Staff has stated that the spirit and intent of the newly adopted code. Is, is not, um, is not a pill. We disagree and we hope you will find accordingly, and again, um. Major, uh, major national retailer with a gigantic parking lot. And more importantly, the characteristics of Cleveland Avenue, Cleveland Avenue is going to be narrowed by the city. The interchange is going to go away, the characteristics of this site, I won't speak to the rest of, of the Northland area by any means, but the characteristics of this site. Warrant an auto, auto centric use.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak forward against this proposal as presented? You have three minutes to do so.
Mr. Chair Dave Paul with the Northland Community Council. I did speak with you last month.
Have you been sworn?
I have been sworn. I don't need to take up the board's time with. Uh, to reiterate the committee's support for the application was presented to you last time. The committee has not yet met again. Uh, and we wait to require the applicant to come back to us because of the addition of the wall. We did not think that was a substantial change that would, uh, I did not think that, that would change the committee's recommendation. Uh, my co-chair agrees, although they're not here tonight. So my point being, we continue to stand in support of this application. Uh, I personally, I can't speak to the committee, but I personally agree with everything that the applicant and their representative has said. Uh, in terms of the. Positioning of this site within the Northland community. Uh, and relative to the freeway that this, if it was not for the fact that it is now a Title thirty four district, would be a highway oriented site. And this use is appropriate here. I believe my neighbors will find this use appropriate. And their efforts to, uh, essentially mitigate. Uh, the requirements for Title thirty four to engage in this use here, I think, uh, improve. the requirements for Title Thirty Four to engage in this use here, I think improved the application. I think I'd encourage you to support it, I know my colleagues on our committee would, I'm certainly here to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you so much. Any questions for the for the witness? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else to speak forward against this proposal as presented? Seeing and hearing none, any questions from board members?
I do have a couple of questions, Mr. Chair, and this is for our colleague Smith, we're not here. Staff, can you recall the conversation between the building orientation and requirements to require? And kind of inform the board members that weren't here present at the last meeting, what the building orientation versus the variance kind of discussion was?
Yeah, Jamie was thinking that the building could fit north-south, but Jane Fine did message me that she did, I don't know if she was part of that meeting, but she did hear the results of that WebEx meeting and David is correct that the buildings would not work in a north to south orientation in its current length.
Okay. Thank you, I was trying, I just want to make sure my other board members were ready to share everybody understanding.
Yep.
Any other questions from board members? Okay.
Just also one more fundamental clarification before we go, the the record usually shows sidewalk here along Cleveland Avenue, since that is limited access right away. There may not be an ability to permit that sidewalk for MoDOT, they typically they discourage or prohibit sidewalks that lead through interchange, so I just want to, before I go forward, just to make sure that there may be opportunity to have that on private property and then there would be no need for any for MoDOT, but just to make sure that's on the record.
It is on the opposite side of the road to with the sidewalk going north.
North of where we are.
Correct, yeah, all the way up.
So probably, but you you're saying you you can't sanction it.
All right, well, the the east side of Cleveland Avenue has pedestrian facilities that are designed, but the west side is not across the interchange to the north, so.
I mean, but arguably with the new zone, this should be intended to be pedestrian use and could be at some point in the future, but it may be on the private property, but not, thank you for the clarification.
I think, Dan, when we when we talked about the sidewalk, part of public services request to the sidewalk was to have a public walk from the intersection and on the front and looping into Mumu, there there is nowhere to go north at the interchange. But and that that's the plan to do.
Correct, and if that, yes, just just if that is limited access right away, that, you know, there is some potential for that to have some for cars to go down that would not.
Okay.
So it's in the, yes, we'll extend the sidewalk south of our property line to tie into the existing, in the park drive and if there's an opportunity to put it onto our prop- private property, then yes, we want to help the spirit of the code to have walkability, so we would install sidewalk on our private property along the landscaping and the wall in between that.
Thank you for that. And good night, Chair, since it was really a case of first impression with the new zoning code, I just want to point out in the context of this, the Duncan factor, if we're really looking at factor number seven. The spirit of intent behind the zoning codes, I would encourage members to discuss that and your feelings, how the new zone code and walkability and whatever. Goes along with the spirit of intent, I was twenty-four, zone code applies to seven, Duncan factor. But you're not suggesting that we really consider one to six? Of course. Okay. Right, and number six, especially here, maybe a practical feasibility, one of the members, I appreciate the testimony, so there's a positive, there's two factors affecting our Thank you. So I'll try again. Beneficial use without the variance, arguably, there's some testimony provided, I would say, no. Is the variance substantial? Based on the numbers as presented, it could be viewed as substantial, how it argued, yes. Essential character of the neighborhood altered, no. Government services affected, no. Knowledge of zoning restriction. You've given testimony that you realized the zoning restriction by way of due diligence period, or given the feasibility of the area without a variance. Again, you presented a very strong case that it could not be for not only your use, but other potential uses. The spirit and intent and substantial justice, again, recognizing the new zoning code and what it is intended to do and recognizing the location of this site in relationship to Cleveland Avenue being the Y highway that it is at this section and proximity to I two seventy. And some, just some challenges, I would say that, yes, substantial justice could be done with the things that you proposed, especially with your interpretation of pedestrian friendly, while it's not the same as the cities. It was with the best intention, I I recognize that. That being said, would anyone like to call a question? I'll tell the question. Questions been called, please call the roll. Mr. Malaka?
Well, first of all, there's a statement, the the new zoning code is approximately, general advantage zoning code, which has pretty benefits to most of the city. But there are areas of overland that I think are need tweaking, let's just put it that way. So based on some real life issues as well as your analysis of the Duncan factors, I'm going to, yes, yes.
Mr. Wollley?
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Malak, I think that the spirit of the zoning requirements are being met with as much opportunity as as the testimony has been provided indicates, and with the landscaping with the sidewalk. I do believe that the spirit is being upheld and also, but yes.
Mr. Segaloff?
Yes, I likewise agree with the chair's analysis of Duncan factors, he nailed that, yes. Done as much as he can on spirit and in a climate that he could, taking into account the surrounding property uses and the location relative to your free life, so I don't favor the variance.
Chair Jones?
Can I add a comment, please? The one thing I do agree with the city's analysis is that stone wall shouldn't be a stone wall. It should be a stone wall, so that's on it, it is imposing, in my opinion.
Okay. Let's conclude the vote because that we've not conditioned, we're not conditioning the decision on on that. But we'll unpack that just in a minute. Finish vote, Chair Jones?
Yes, the variances are granted. And I don't want to take time right here, I don't know if you guys can solve. I don't, I don't have a problem with the wall, I'm not an architect, but I understand why you're doing it, the landscape and the the screening makes a lot of sense to me and it gives the illusion of a building based on the height and the construction type, so I'm not arguing for it, but I defer to my colleague here who has a much broader perspective on architectural review, et cetera, so congratulations.
Thank you.
We're going to return to the appeals case, call BCA two five zero seven four for seventeen eighty-nine Holly Ridge Road. Is the appellate present? So I'm, I don't know what your opinion is, I'm of the opinion an appellate's not here, so there's no appeal. So there is a requirement under the law, ultimately, the appellate has to attend. It is the appellate's case and burden of proof. It was convinced the board that the order is incorrect. I'm would be curious to know if there's any contact between staff and the appellate recently. About between staff?
I I sent and I wish I had the date on this, I sent it before, this is two weeks ago, I was I sent out notice to the appellate, I sent it regular and certified, I did not get a green card back to but I did send it regular.
So they got it, they sent it. If you guys want to come forward, maybe you can speak not necessarily to the case, but to communication with the appellate. And would you please provide your names and whether or not you've been sworn?
My name's Matthew Cross, I have been sworn, yes.
My name's Kyle Kirk, I have not been sworn.
You have?
I have not.
Please raise your right hand, do you swear from the testimony that you provided is true to the best of your knowledge and belief, if so, say I do?
I do.
Okay, what can you tell us about communication, has it been resolved or?
The the case has not been resolved, no, as far as yet.
Okay, when was the last time you communicated with the appellate?
Me personally, I have not communicated very fairly recently. My last communication was probably maybe June or July, I want to say.
So it's my understanding that they were sent out a notice, they did not sign for the notice for the certified mail. And that's all the communication that I believe that we've had. That's the officer for the case, this year's supporting.
Okay, but it still remains unresolved, the code, the orders of this?
Yes.
Okay.
So I might ask Chair if the enforcement officer had the position on whether to proceed, deny it, it is the appellate's case, but at the same time, you know, we're here, we've had the opportunity to create that. I don't think you can do that, I think that.
Yeah, I think the only regret I want to read is, I don't want to do this in a sense of and then somebody argued we didn't hear them, so I would say I would accept the motion to dismiss the appeals case so that, you know, they recognize that we did have an opportunity for them and they failed to show up.
I would agree with that and I'll make the motion to dismiss the deal.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, please call the roll. Uh, Ms. Wollley?
Yes.
Ms. Dave Paul?
Yes.
Ms. Malaka?
Yes.
Chair Jones? Yes, we will, we're voting to dismiss the case under to the appellate filing the appeal, so there should be no planning attacks. You good?
I'm good.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead and sign, okay.
All right, second.
I'll sign this. Case BVA two five dash zero three five, three ninety-five Stewart Avenue.
And we did receive a one letter of opposition, which I'm going to pass down now. Three ninety-five Stewart Avenue is located on the south side of Stewart Avenue, approximately sixty feet east of Rex Alley. It's part of the Columbus Southside Area Commission and the existing zone is R two at Residential District. The point one four eight, the site is currently filled with a single unit dwelling. Surrounding uses include similar single unit dwellings to the north, south, east and west. The applicant proposes to split the lot and construct a new single unit dwelling on the new resulting lot fronting Beale Alley. The applicant is requesting variances to reduce the required lot width from fifty feet to thirty-six point fifty-five feet for both lots. Reduce the required lot size for six thousand square feet for a single old family dwelling to about three thousand one hundred and six square feet for both resulting lots. Reduce the required rear yard from seven hundred and seventy-six square feet, which is twenty-five percent to five hundred and forty-eight square feet, down to seventeen percent for the lot fronting Stewart Avenue. And two hundred and fifty-five square feet, which would be eight percent for the lot fronting Beale Alley. Reduce the required off-street parking spaces from two to zero for the lot fronting Stewart Avenue. Increase the building coverage from one thousand five hundred fifty-three square feet, which is fifty percent to one thousand nine hundred and thirty square feet, which would be sixty-two percent. Allow for a dwelling to front onto an alley and reduce the maximum side yard from seven feet and four inches, which is twenty percent of the lot width to six feet and two inches, which is sixteen point eight percent of the lot width. Planning is in full support of the proposal. SAV notes revised site plan and building elevations are consistent with south side, with the south side of plane and Columbus Citywide Planning Policies C two P two design guidelines. Traffic has indicated that a condition will need to be added to the board order that no access will be provided to Stewart Avenue. The Columbus Southside Area Commission has recommended approval of the request of variances for a manumously. And city department's recommendation is likewise that, approval. SAV recommends approval as the revised site plan and building elevations are consistent with the south side plan and Columbus Citywide Plan Policies Design Guidelines and follow similar development patterns in the surrounding area. The proposal is also aligned with the city's goal of providing more housing in all parts of the city. We do also request that that condition be added, that no access shall be provided to Stewart Avenue.
Chair? Thank you. What's your benefit suit? The request to remove access or to have no access. Does that preclude them, does that request preclude them from having off-street parking?
In a sense, I guess it would, I guess in looking at that, the reason for that was there is not any other driveways in the general of this street, so that would be setting a precedence to having a direct access to Stewart Avenue. Trying to avoid creating access points to Stewart Avenue.
Well, all due respect. We're in a world of creating denseness creating, you know, new housing. We don't have the bandwidth or ability to not have off-street parking in an area congested like this. So I think when you look at the value of the precedent, especially in this area, because we can limit precedent based on the case. I'd rather see a curb cut and access to parking off-street so that it's not removed. I don't know, you know, here on the fly, I don't know how much we can do with that, I'm going to certainly let you present your case. But as you heard earlier, you know, a case was denied for a similar reason. And as evidenced by this letter, did they receive this letter?
Is that from Gregory Price?
Yes.
Yeah, I got it.
You know, and what I can surmise the examples of lot splits and new construction all included, you know, parking. So that's that's kind of the elephant in the room, if you will. So we want to support, I personally want to support any way that you can create parking and would would support a curb veto if necessary. Despite the precedent that it sets, us allowing this this applicant to go through with zero parking would be precedent setting as well, so.
I mean, I guess I understand that decision, I guess, in this instance, it's we guess we see it as a one for one, it would be removing a public parking space and providing a private parking space, so and then there's different ways to look at that, but there's not really that game potentially.
Good point, good point, but it's object sometimes. Yes, it is.
My name's John Lang, consultant for Sherman Properties, the owner, and Bruce Gerlach is the owner of Sherman Properties. My argument to that and on the one for one, we tabled it back in June and then spent July and part of August working with traffic and because we're open to doing a curb cut. This is one of maybe two lots on that block that has the ability to do a curb cut with off-street parking. Though we would need one variance to minimize the setback by, I think from four feet to three feet in order to provide an off-street spot, but we can actually do two off-street spots if we have a curb cut on this property, still, so we'd actually gain one. We didn't pursue that, traffic did shoot that down pretty quickly on the curb cut. And we, on the rear unit, we did have, it's a two-car attached and we had one off-street, but then planning wanted to bring that patio forward to be proud of the garage. So we were attempting to get as much parking as we can and trying to work with the, you know, the the parameters that were given, but we would love to do a curb cut on Stewart Avenue if that was possible and happy to do the variances.
I'm I'm the chair, probably not sparring on this anyway.
I I just wanted you, that was going to be part of mine, because we did pursue that because it is one of the few lots that is, has the ability on that that block. Regarding the letter that you received from Mr. Price, I know him, I I lived on this property back in two thousand and three. No parking has ever been, no cars have been parked in the rear, though I know
Uh, no parking has ever been, no cars have been parked in the rear, though I know it does have one off street spot in the garage. Um, there is not room on either side of the garage due to a gas meter and an electrical pole. There's only, there's eight feet, that could be nine for an off street spot there. Um, it was ninety seven inches between the gas meter and the brick building on the left and ninety seven on the right. Uh, so it was, it's one car that could potentially be on the, that we're losing on.
Here it is on, on existing.
On existing, yeah.
Let's focus on the going forward.
Yeah, so going forward, um, with Mr. Price's letter, he was under the assumption that we were adding two units in the back. That's false. We're only adding one. And looking, providing two off street parking spots for that. So that unit would not provide any further density to the parking on, uh, on Stewart Avenue. Um, I did have the tenant, uh, take a picture of this evening of what it looks like as far as density goes for the parking. Um, I mailed it to you, um, by chance.
Um, would this have been today?
Yeah, so I didn't know it just in case.
About to say, I probably didn't make.
Yeah, I have it on my phone. I'm happy to show you guys, but there's, there's, again, there's never been a car parked back there for Stewart Avenue. Um, and I do appreciate that. We technically are losing one, but we're not adding any future hardship, um, beyond what is already currently there. So by doing the split and the two cars in the back. I'm proud, so.
Anything else you'd like to add?
Um, nope. I think I just wanted you guys to know we attempted the curb cut.
And I would like to ask you if you've both been sworn. I'm sorry.
I have been sworn.
Yes, I've been sworn.
Okay. Nothing else? Is there anyone, let me ask, ask the board members. I kind of made some comments and a few discussion around, uh, a curb cut. Before we go too far down this rabbit hole, what are your thoughts about that? Because again, it's my opinion that having two off street beats losing one off street. Uh, but maybe you guys feel the same about, you know?
Uh, I guess my, my feeling is that I don't have a problem with this whole thing, but I would like to not mandate that it occur that we would add. Not allowing a curb cut. Because if that's allowed in the future, we're basically cutting this property off forever doing that, right?
Yeah.
Could put me in that. And I'm looking across the street and we're in a perfect, I go across the street.
If that's the only other one on that street that has the ability to do a curb cut.
So it's already got one right directly across the street I'm looking at, so.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with curb cut. And I think what they're doing, again, having intensity is something we're at and we're pushing towards. The city's been pushing towards that, I think, just as appropriate.
And I'm, I'm, I don't, I, I really want an opinion about an alternative solution for parking so that we can address that specifically and maybe we don't address it tonight. Saff is gonna kill me for even, you know, changing this at this point. Uh, but if, if this board has, um, a sense that that's where they'd like to see things go, I'd rather correct them now before we get too deep into deliberation, continued deliberation.
Yeah, I haven't really thought about curb cut frankly. Um, I was and I'm supportive of this because it's kind of a one for one opportunity in my mind and I am concerned about parking as I stated earlier, so it's narrowed the case. Uh, so this is something that I'm open to. Um, I do like Mr. Malapa's solution of not indicating that in the future they can have a curb cut and putting that such that it's, uh, opportunity existent applies in the future, but, um, open to that conversation.
I'm similar. I, I hadn't thought about the curb cut. I, I don't have an opposition to it. Um, but I was, I'm supportive already, so.
Okay. So it would be in my mind, if I'm correct, if I'm wrong, it would be us removing the variance request three, 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 two point oh five. I'm sorry. No. Where is the parking?
Uh, thirty three.
Yeah, twenty four point four nine. Uh, would it make sense, since you have a plan that would require a lot more variance, again, we can't do this on the basis.
Yeah, we had submitted one originally with the parking in there and then they came back with what the variance would need to be.
And again, I'm trying not to burden you guys with doing this on the fly. And you don't have to feel obligated. You need to give us evidence and we can go accordingly. But if you had interest in removing that, um, I would be supportive of that. And it sounds like some of my colleagues would as well.
To do the curb cut.
To do the curb.
Yeah.
Would you want to do that? The curb cut. Yeah, we don't mind a curb cut as long as the city allows it.
Well, that's a question, so.
Yeah, I don't want to preempt traffic here because even if we allow them, like in this forum here to move forward, there was still, as far as I understand, would need to apply the curb cut to you guys.
Well, and so this is the, the creation of the lot split will entitle the property owner with, uh, access. So I guess that this is, this is usually, you know, we see a lot of these cases where I don't know, they get access on both sides, so, um, we wouldn't, uh, if, if this goes forward and the variance is created and there's lots of effectuated, the property owner is entitled to access to Stewart Avenue just based on that as their only legal frontage. And then they simply have to, uh, comply with any of the zoning requirements related to the parking spaces.
So they would, uh, if not for us eliminating it, which is what you originally requested, right?
Right, they would, I, creation of lots, the variances of the lots, they would, they would be legally entitled to, uh, access to Stewart Avenue.
Do you understand that?
So if we eliminate the variance for parking, for no parking?
If you split, if you split the lot period, you are entitled to access because we have not specifically
Yeah, okay.
excluded or prohibited that.
Okay.
Now, I, I hate to energize, but that would also, if we are going with the plan with a, uh, with an access to Stewart, it would probably also, uh, what would necessitate other variances for like parking inside or that sort of thing. So this might be a situation where if we are gonna go this direction, it would probably make sense to table instead of doing it like a follow up BZA for other variances that would be required at that later date.
And it's entirely up to you, but I'm a no vote. So I'm gonna put that out there.
Yeah.
And you can take the vote with the rest of the body if that's presented, but it's entirely up to you.
You're, you're a no vote for cut for not having additional parking.
Right, I'm a no vote on thirty three twelve point four nine.
But if we, if we split the lot and keep the no parking variance in there, then we couldn't. So I, I guess I agree with you saying to remove that altogether and then that would allow us, if we have a yes vote, to then go towards getting it down the road.
Correct.
Otherwise, we can't go towards getting a curb cut.
You would not have, so here's how I interpret this. If you table this now, you can come back with the variances that would be required for you to have those two off street parking spaces and assuming a curb cut, which is your entitlement when you successfully have a lot split. That makes sense.
We'd have to get approved first, right?
It would approve.
Well, you're saying if we table it, then we have to go back to, to traffic, which we already did.
I think we can effectively eliminate all of these except for thirty three twelve point forty nine. Where you do not have a variance for parking. And all the others could potentially be approved.
Mm-hmm.
And again, the lot split is effectuated, so you're entitled to access.
And then going back and, okay.
And you'd have to have code compliant space. So you'd have to follow whatever directives the city would present.
So I guess we vote now is depend without the parking and then tabling that one variance? Is that, am I getting that?
Well, you'd have to come in and apply for a variance.
A new variance for the parking.
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
If I'm understanding correctly, truly, yeah, there are a lot of.
I know, it's trying to.
Oh, no fun, alright. So, okay, if I'm understanding correctly, the plan is we would, um, approve, it's approve all variances but the off street parking loading?
Correct.
Okay, and then, uh, the, it would approve the lot split as traffic's saying, then they would be allowed, um, the chance to have that, uh, access because it would be required. So am I understanding that correctly?
They would be entitled, this is their only, uh, property frontage.
Gotcha. And then the only issues then would be if there are any variances that would be required to situate that driveway. It would require a follow up.
Wish, wish there are a couple, there's a, I think, one side.
Probably are.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Minimizing from four feet to three feet.
Right, and but, I mean, as long as you guys are okay with doing a second BZA for those.
For that only, it would be just for the parking curb cut one.
It sounds like, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, what are you doing?
We got there.
All right. That being said, and is that how you'd like?
Yes, I think that's good. That's a good.
For members of the audience, things have changed a little bit, but generally the variances requested are all in place except they will be removing thirty three twelve point forty nine. That being said, is there anyone who has an interest in this case that would like to speak for or against it as, as presented? Any additional discussion or questions from board members? Okay. We'll move forward with the Duncan factors, Duncan standards. Beneficial use without the variance, yes, because it's beneficial not. Is the variance substantial? Uh, arguably, yes, it is, but it's in line with what has occurred in many, um, nearby homes that have provided off street parking. Essential character of the neighborhood, it's been altered, um, slowly based on lot splits, so I don't think that it will essentially change the character, um, completely. It won't be the first or the second or third. Governmental services affected, I would argue, no, no more so than they are now. Zoning knowledge, uh, zoning, to acknowledge the zone restriction, yes. The owner certainly is aware and, um, has potentially been aware before, especially since this is newly created as a lot split, so you're creating a bit of it on your own as well as the feasibility, um, can be obviated without variance, no, but again, you're creating particular. The spirit and intent and substantial justice, no, I think arguably it would be. Um, so that being said, would someone like to call a question?
Sorry, one more, one more item. There is a, so it, I do need to say it would be SAF's preference that this get tabled and it be wrapped up in one BZA. While we can go the route of the two BZA applications, uh, like previously discussed, it would be cleaner to do it in one. Uh, ultimately, it is up to the applicant, but, uh, I just wanted to say that for the record.
Is there, is there an issue with not having a lot split done?
I think they just feel like there's a lot of.
Is there a burden?
Shut themself.
If the lot split hasn't been done, is there a burden to go to traffic? I think that's what Mr. Malapa is saying.
Because then.
Because that gives us a say, has that burdened?
Yeah, so, um, and I'm getting this real time here, but, uh, the lot split would be predicated on meeting code. Um, so this is going to require some further discussion and there are questions as to whether or not, like, okay, if this is kind of relying on a, all relying on a follow up BZA that hasn't been passed yet, i- is that going to be enough to allow this last bit?
We would vote on the lot split now.
You mean?
That everybody has already said we approve of. Right? Everybody in your line.
Approve of the lot split itself?
Yeah.
Yeah, so is that what you're saying?
So there's no likely, if we don't have a concern with it, there's no concern with the lot split.
But the point of the, I believe, what I understand the issue there being is then we have that, there needs to be that follow up BZA to allow for that parking or they would need to go, uh, seek a variance for reduced parking again. And then they're kind of forced into this situation where they're gonna either need one or the other, once they don't get one of those.
They wouldn't be able to, uh, file the lot split without the plan showing parking on enough parking for that, uh, additional parcel, so, uh, they would have to have the other variance for parking, uh, obtained before the lot split would be able to be finalized.
Finalized if not approved. We, once we approved it, it's approved. It just has to go through the formalities, correct?
No, because it wouldn't be code compliant. The development, proposed development would not be code compliant because the parking wouldn't be code compliant without the additional variances.
Yeah, they would need that second BZA before the lot split could happen.
And so again, arguably, they don't have standing with, um, traffic if they don't have a lot split.
Because then there's no more entitlement to it.
Chicken or egg?
Right.
Yeah.
And I don't, I don't see.
Let's ask the attorney.
There are three members who are supportive of that. That's true too. We run the.
Yeah, I, I think we proceed.
Yeah, proceed.
Proceed, proceed as is.
Proceed as is with the, taking, removing the, um.
The off street parking.
Off street parking.
Got it. So keeping the off street parking, where are we on the condition? And that's, that's for the.
I, I do have a question for the city attorney. If we do remove something, does that, uh, change, I guess?
Like, you're saying you don't. Yeah, here's the whole issue. If you remove thirty three twelve point four nine, this is the discussion.
Yeah.
BZA needs, right, or is mission, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah.
The application as presented right now has the support of.
Oh, okay.
These days. Here's a subsidy I issued. Traffic management wants the condition of no access to Stewart Avenue, right? But I'm hearing from the board that you don't care.
No, I, I don't.
Not that condition.
I don't condition, condition.
It's not a condition until we add it.
Right.
Right. I'm just feeling.
I, I would not approve that condition.
So we don't want the condition? Mr. Wellley, you don't want to get that in, okay, Mr. Malapa, you don't want the condition as well. So the application right now, we as presented, without the condition for traffic management, Francis Stewart, no access to Stewart Avenue, and yet it's for three members.
Okay, then, yeah, then we'll just keep it as is then. Yeah.
So we're keeping thirty three twelve forty nine?
Yeah.
And then losing like a cloud? Got it.
But you have the, the board actually talking to that and vote on it. And Mr. Jones, you were against this, while this is the, the parking.
Correct.
So you can say your analysis of the Duncan factor, but we will need also other members who are supportive of the package to do their analysis. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
So I, I do have a question. If we, if we do approve this, would you come back for parking?
It's not on the street.
I know you're not required to.
I mean, I, I would love to have parking there. I think it's, I would rather have at least one, if not two, off street spots there. Um, I mean, that's the whole intent. That's why it was in our original plan. Um, so I mean, that is, if we still have that ability down the road, then.
Well, I, I would like, and I appreciate you saying that, and your testimony is under oath here. I'd like your, uh, client to say that.
Sure, I agree. I think it's a good solution to a difficult problem. I mean, we're, we're wanting to, we're offering to build an ADU, as you call it, right?
No.
Uh, isn't it?
No, not for the law split.
Oh, then we do a lot split, right? Well, we're gonna have a separate, uh, structure and I would agree that parking is an issue and anything can do to resolve it. I would be in supportive.
That you will plan to do. You will plan to do that to resolve the parking deficiency.
Correct.
Okay, and with that being said, I don't, with them under, under oath, I feel comfortable voting with a yes or affirmative. So with that being said, you can still deliver your own opinions on the Duncan factors and Duncan standards. Um, but, uh, does someone want to call a question?
I'll call the question.
Questions that have called, please call the roll and feel free to share your Duncan standards.
Ms. Aplaw?
What's taking?
Um, well, I think the chairman has had this shot and somewhere in the Duncan factors, but I think the fact that they've got parking on this south side area commissioned approval, um, and weighing in the, I think that the spirit and extent will be deemed by the, the, the variables by the.
Ms. Malapa?
Overall, I agree with the chair's assessments of the Duncan factor and hearing that the applicant has committed to coming in for additional parking that would solve that issue, I'm a yes.
Mr. Wellley?
Mr. Wildley?
I agree with my colleagues, especially on the parking, but yes.
Jay Jones?
Yes, your answer is granted. We look forward to seeing you in the future.
Thank you.
BZI two-five dash zero three eight for ten thirty-six off Front Street. I need to accuse myself on this one. So with that being said, I have not indicated in the beginning of this meeting that we did have four voting members. You have been right to table your case. Should you want to do that, since you only have three of the voting members, do you want to proceed?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Just making some notes?
Thank you.
I, I would like to let you guys know that the staff report that was in packet, there were some. I know there was some issues on it, so you should have a updated staff report in progress.
Or in the.
It was at your seat when you arrived. So rather than follow up your staff papers. BZI twenty-five dash oh three eight for ten thirty-six South Front Street. It's located at the southwest corner of South Front Street and West Dashler Avenue. It's located in the Historic Resources Commission and it's owned UCT Bourbon Center District. But zero point six plus minus acre site is improved with a commercial building and surface parking lot. Which was previously used as a radio station, bar and an event center. The applicant is proposing to demolish the building and replace it with a six-story residential building consisting of ninety-five dwelling units and ground floor parking. And requests variances to provide a trash room and parking on ground floor instead of active interior space. To reduce the interior parking setback along the West Dashler Avenue property line from twelve feet to zero feet. And to reduce the ten by ten vision clearance triangle at the intersection of Red Bud Alley and South Front Street to three by three. And at the intersection of South Wall Street, which is an alley, and West Dashler Avenue to six by six. Planning has no comment on the proposal as it is located within the Historic Resources Commission. The Division of Traffic Management state that a right-of-way dedication of forty feet from centerline of South Front Street will be required. All other comments, including the reduced vision clearance triangle, have been resolved. The Historic Resources Commission recommends approval of this request. Staff can recommend approval of the request to allow a mechanical slash trash room on the first floor along South Front Street. And to reduce the ten by ten vision plan triangle at the intersection of Red Bud Alley and South Front Street to three by three. And at the intersection of South Wall Street, which is an alley, and West Dashler Avenue to six by six feet. However, staff notes that by removing the four northernmost parking spaces. The variances to reduce interior parking setback along the West Dashler Avenue property line from twelve feet to zero feet would be eliminated. Since we're in disapproval, we're going to go through the Duncan standards. Number one, beneficial use of variance, yes. The zero point six acre site could accommodate a code compliant development. Is it substantial? No. However, two of the request variances to provide parking rather than active interior space and to reduce the parking setback. Along the West Dashler Avenue could be met with the elimination of just four parking spaces. Essential character of the neighborhood altered, yes, and for the better. The UCT district is a predominantly walkable district comprised of. Tasked and some detached buildings accommodating a range in height, including mostly medium-rise buildings. Governmental services affected, no. Knowledge or zoning restriction, yes. Predicament, feasibility without variance, a code compliant development could be constructed. Spirit and intent and substantial justice, the goal of UCT is to provide opportunities for infill development of vacant parcels and parking lots. Reuse of older buildings and redevelopment at higher densities. It allows residential, retail, service and other commercial uses. While staff knows that this infill project will be a much needed improvement to the neighborhood, providing active interior space along the West Dashler Avenue. Frontage would be preferred over those parking spaces.
So. You're basically saying because of the onsite parking. You guys would be, you're opposed to this generally, you must have crux on it?
Yeah, because this could be obviated another way, just by simply removing a few of those parking spaces. Then we no longer need those variances and we'd be perfectly fine with the application.
Do you feel like they're overparked based on ninety-five units or?
With us getting rid of parking minimums in the new districts. It all comes down to a parking study for most of us.
So how many parking, how many spaces are you going to provide?
Forty-nine.
And that's code compliant.
Correct.
For ninety-five units as well. I can't see ninety-five units taking in more parking delays or talking about losing four spaces, right? Okay, thank you very much. Would you please provide your name and indicate whether or not you've been sworn?
Yeah, Craig Moncrief, attorney for the applicant, I have been sworn.
Thank you, Mr. Moncrief. Do you have anything additional that you'd like to add, as you do not have the support of city staff? So you have a bit of a villain climate, I would say.
Sure, yes. Could, could staff please go back to the, oh, the satellite view? Of the property. So for some background, this property formerly occupied by a radio station. Have been vacant for, I would say, over a year now. One-story martial building, surface parking lot, included with the new zoning code, so we proposed a development. That would add density, add housing, proposing a six-story apartment development. Working with the Historic Resources Commission, traffic going through the preliminary site compliance plan. The, everything has pointed towards activating Front Street. So you can see the property is long but narrow. It's got two hundred and thirty feet of frontage on front, about a hundred feet of frontage on Dashler. And HRC and, and traffic was adamant about removing the curb cuts on front, adding active space. And so what we did is added seven ground floor units, some amenity space, so these are partial variances. I think that's important when going to the spirit of the active space requirements, which is a twelve-foot depth. Here, we're providing, while it's not touching every single foot of frontage here, it is significant. It's going fifty foot back along Front Street, it's just about the entirety of Front Street. So there's going to be a significant amount, well beyond code required as far as square footage goes for active space. And it's going to add to the maneuverability for passenger, just, you know, walking down pedestrian access, I'll say. And, and that also led to having to put parking behind these units more towards the rear and access off of the southern alley. You know, kind of going to Chair's point that we're at forty-nine parking spaces, so losing four. May not sound like a ton, but when you crunch the numbers, that is a fairly significant loss there. Really, for something that I would say is typical for this type of urban infill development, you can see, I mean, you can see zero foot parking setbacks on that picture. Let alone going up and down Brewery District. It also gives some benefits of extending the parking garage to a property line. We can add. Windows there or kind of ventilation to help with the ventilation, temperature control on the parking lot. And like I said, keeping those parking spaces. So I think all things considered, it's justified. It's a development that's going to bring density and much needed housing to development. This has been thoroughly flushed out with the HRC and with traffic to, you know, work this lot that is long but narrow. So, thank you.
Anybody in the audience would like to speak for or against this proposal as presented? Yes, sir. Would you please provide your name and indicate whether or not you've been sworn?
My name is Scott Castle. I was out of town, so I haven't had a lot of time to look into anything since I got back, but more or less I have a question. To determine if I have an issue with it, based on the. The vision clearance triangle. I have no idea what a vision clearance.
We're gonna, we're gonna let the traffic person address that here.
Sure, so the vision clearance triangles are the requirements that are set forth. In this case, at the intersection of each alley with the public street. So, so there are two locations where they're proposed to reduce those slightly. And that is both for particular pedestrian visibility at the intersections there. So I guess I would note, I guess, based on this comment, that this, this site plan, I don't believe, there may be updated information in the packets, but.
Yeah.
Plan does not reflect the approvals or what we had looked at, because there, there were. Sites exhibits that were put together by professional engineers laid out the lines to visibility. So there, there is a slight adjustment to this plan that's on the screen that scaled back the building slightly, particularly in that northeast corner. But that, you know, after the review and looking at those sites exhibits, we're comfortable with. The revised layout that would not compromise pedestrian or pedestrian safety than those intersections.
So you understand that traffic management sees no issue with this, that section.
I do. As a resident that uses Lethair Affair numerous times a day. I would have issue with minimizing visual traffic from both, primarily more along Front Street than Red Bud. But with the amount of cars that typically park on Red Bud and Dashler. Especially that intersection and the amount of traffic that comes through because of not being able to turn left from Green Lawn to High Street. They come back around through that way constantly. So I would have concern for both vehicles trying to exit out onto Front Street. And then the large amount of pedestrian traffic, I think that there could be issues from that angle.
And I, and reviewing those exhibits, if, if there was, as far as what they're asking for, there. There may need to be some parking adjustments based on the sightlines that we're shown there. But as far as what they're asking for, as far as any building locations, that will not. If, if, reviewing the information, that will not compromise any necessary sightlines.
You understand that? So he, I, I, my interpretation of what you're saying is that you may limit parking, on-street parking in some of those areas. So that there are no further safety issues as you've described. But the building placement will not present any new or any uncomfortable, for lack of a better term. Visual, visually accessible movement for cars or pedestrians.
Okay, I understand that's their consensus.
Okay. Anything additional that you'd like to add or ask?
I don't believe so. That was the main concern.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak for or against this proposal as presented? Any questions or comments from board members? Okay, Duncan standards. Beneficial use without the variance, yes, it would be beneficial use if this variance is not approved. Is the variance substantial? The variances, the project is substantial, but I would argue that the variance is requested really is not. Essential character of the neighborhood altered, yes, this project will alter the character of the neighborhood substantially. But I don't think the variance is due. Governmental services affected, I would argue, no. Zoning, our knowledge of zoning restrictions, I would say yes. The acquisitions taken place, predicament feasibly obvious without the variance, yes, because the predicament is self-imposed. Spirit and intent and substantial justice done, I think looking at. Being a code compliant on parking is huge, especially in this community. Providing a trash room, a much needed service. And adjusting the clearance, vision clearance triangle. Without creating, according to traffic management, any burden or threat to safety. I think all of those with the scope inside of this project. The spirit and intent and substantial justice would be done by a scratchy variance. That being said, would someone like to call a question?
I'll call a question.
Questions been called, please call the role.
Mr. Wildley?
I agree with the chair's assessment of the Duncan factors, specifically disagree with staff's. Interpretation of number seven and the spirit and substantial justice. Where staff agrees that this info project is much needed improvement to the neighborhood. However, they would prefer interior space over the proposed parking spaces. I, I disagree. I agree with the fact that it is much needed. And I think that this, it's an opportunity to fulfill the need that the project is going to do, and thus I vote yes for the project.
Mr. Wild.
Yeah, I likewise agree with the chair's analysis of Duncan factors, the fact that there's, there's sort of resource submissions, support. The fact that traffic is a field of vision clearance and not being removable before parking spaces as staff proposes or viable solution. So taking all that into consideration, I would favor.
Chair Jones?
Yes, variance is a brand come up with the project. We're gonna take a five-minute interview.
Thank you.
Sorry, I forgot to do that. It's not like the front of people's apartments.
Yeah.
Your house, he like. What's it those people?
Towing.
I don't know if I snapped the face, but that's one of my buddies who used to work for the station. Please get some nice replacing it.
And draw that.
Wow, it's a record waiter. I couldn't understand it. Well, it makes a lot of sense.
She's good. She was here this time.
Yeah, I can imagine that was tough. Resource?
Yeah.
Still, uh, can you change the number, right?
No, that ending, ending. And I don't know if she's got her things going.
Fourth Tuesday, yes, I meant Monday. It's the fourth Tuesday, yes, I'm.
I was right. She should know that schedule. It's been twenty-six years.
Holding torn down. And they said that this one, they wanted a story taken. You know, should have seen that.
It does look amazing.
Yeah.
Great work. And you did this?
Yeah, well, our team, yeah.
But you did this. So. I don't like our good, with staff open.
Right. That's a very good question.
Okay, yeah, yeah, no, no, no.
Good evening.
No, I'm sure he didn't take any offense, but.
Yes, as a kid, I say my face tells a story.
And if I, if I had to.
Do you get to alternate meetings or?
Like conjecture to why. It's probably because of variances themselves, but in that case, and enough to where.
I try not to talk to you guys in the city attorney's office. That's always trouble for me.
No one ever comes to me with just.
Well, yeah, that's always. I probably, there have been some cases where I'm like, you know.
Well, we are, we are some people.
When it goes through the final, like, you know, check.
You need to solve this problem.
Usually it's because, well, you know, if we have X, Y, Z variance. Give us any added benefit.
I feel like people understand doctors' recommendations.
Right, yeah.
Attorneys, they want to kind of talk you out of.
You never met Harrison Smith, but he was, he was a legend. I was a very young student. And he goes, I want to talk to Harry. Harrison tells me the exact same thing I told him, and he's like a bobblehead like this. And you know, I'm embarrassed. I mean, here's the senior. He goes, he looked at me and says, Jeff, sometimes it's just. They take it though, if you've got white hair. Yeah, so you don't have white hair.
Yeah, I'm number seven. Wow. Oh, yeah, because one of them, that's fair.
What happened to?
Five, which one was that?
That's the one we got the letter from.
Yeah.
My friend.
Oh, what?
Yeah.
I didn't realize that.
He didn't send a letter, he sent an email. And he is happy everybody.
That case is uh going back through the tally village. So they want to have more authentication. There's just some minor changes and I have received another letter uh from another neighbor. Okay, um, yeah, they're working on it.
I was just expecting you to say it.
Yeah. No, it was supposed to be, yeah, this agenda, but uh they are making corrections or something. And uh it's time that still just last. So probably. I think I've moved it to next one, but they say even maybe. Pumps to large tags, it may be even another one, so.
Okay, where do we go?
That's the important one.
Yeah, I'm just playing.
You guys can go without us.
Yeah.
We've gone without her before. We've had a microphone. I don't know why they don't put a stenographer right there when she's not here.
Yeah. I don't, actually he doesn't even have a stenographer or anything like that. So then I guess, again, I guess they're just issuing a recommendation rather than legally binding.
Yeah.
We'll resume shortly, everybody.
Are you grandpa?
Doing really well.
Good.
It's a lot of fun.
You just not getting finished?
Yeah, well, I've talked to my son a lot about why he was so behind. Yes. Yes, we have friends that, you know, are 15 years younger than they started, so. But we were very happy to have one. He's only 10 minutes away. So when they need help, that's who gets called first. And grandma is thrilled to death.
I'm sure, yeah.
BVA two five and zero five four for eleven fifty-five West Mount Street.
All right, eleven fifty-five West Mount Street is located on the south side of West Mount Street, opposite the uh South Yale Avenue. Uh, across South West Area Commission and existing dummy CPD districts. The forty-seven point one six one acre site is currently developed with stadium and associated parking lot. Uh, the latter of which being used as a CDL driving school. To the north are several auto dealerships, to the south is a cemetery. To the east are offices, multi-residential developments and a nothing cemetery, and to the west is a heavy equipment rental facility. The applicant, the aforementioned Green Lawn Cemetery to the south of the site, proposes to construct a row of mausoleons for the cemetery on the neighboring parcel to the north along their southernmost property line. The applicant is requesting a special permit for the expansion of the cemetery use on this property. Planning has no comment on the request as the Southwest area plan does not address special permits, and the Division of Traffic Management has no comments. The Southwest Area Commission has recommended approval of the request's special permit, um, voting unanimously. City Department's recommendation is likewise not approval. Staff recommends approval as the requested uh um special permit requirement for this property is technical in nature. As while the use would technically be posted on the subject property, it would be accessed from and provide service to the neighboring property which already has an established cemetery use. Chair?
Thank you very much. Would you please provide your name and indicate whether or not you've been sworn?
I'm Jeffrey L. Brown, attorney for the applicant, and I have been sworn.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. You have a recommendation of approval from the city staff. Is there anything additional that you'd like to add?
I think the aerial shows everything you need to know in that green lawn, which I found out is actually two words and not one word uh when I did the application. Um, the cemetery is at the bottom of this picture and you see the Catholic cemetery up there. So I think we are very consistent with the area. This allows Green Lawn to provide additional burial options, and sooner or later you run out of space. So this allows them to maximize what they have and also provides some better security for them. So as this would progress, uh currently, the stadium site is surrounded by storage containers. And so as Green Lawn builds those mausoleums, we would replace the mausoleum, uh, the storage containers with the mausoleums.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak for or against this proposal as presented? Any questions or comments from board members?
And just a reminder, this is a special permit, so we're looking at three thirty of seven point oh six A for the standard.
And no Duncan standards are necessary. And I don't need to make an exception. Sorry, you can be need to give. Standards under the special permits actually, such an. Okay. Regarding substantial investment in public good, substantial impairment of the general purposes zoning district, or significant incompatibility with the general character of the neighborhood. So this is the sign of business. To God, yes, correct. This is a God decision made on this process. It's not, I don't know if this is a. Duncan standard, or it is a standard, but not one requires reading, unless I'm misunderstanding.
Well, if we could read them, that would be.
To grant special permits for uses listed in chapter three thirty-eight nine, where it is shown that the special use can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, without substantial impairment to the general purpose and intent of the zoning district in which the use is proposed to be located, and without significant incompatibility with the general character of the neighborhood.
And then if you would just analyze this, as you would, a Duncan standard is just a special permit with three factors rather than seven.
Okay. Um, my analysis is that this applicable um for this special use could be granted without uh substantial detriment, as has been illustrated by the applicant and their attorney. Without substantial impairment of the general purpose and intent of the zoning district, as is witnessed by its adjacent neighbors that exist with a similar use, as well as um it provide actually significant compatibility with the general character of the neighborhood that is free and most adjacent uh to the proposed site. And if anyone likes to call a question?
I'll call a question.
Questions been called, please call the roll. Mr. Bellocum?
I agree with the chair's judgment analysis. Oh, yes.
Mr. Wodley?
I confirm, oh, yes.
Ms. Ageloff?
Yeah, based on the testimony, the applicant, the applicant, the fact that the cemetery is already neighboring the property and the other neighboring uses that the special use can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, without substantial impairment for the general purposes and intent of the zoning district, and without significant incompatibility with the general character of the nature, and voting basis of special.
Chair Jones? Yes.
Thank you very much.
Happy building.
Thanks.
Name two five, depth zero six six, twenty-three sixteen Turquoise Drive. Uh, twenty-three sixteen Turquoise, Four Turquoise Drives is located on the east side of Turquoise Drive, approximately hundred thirty feet north of Nugget Drive. Uh, it's a SR suburban residential and in part of the Southwest Area Commission. The site is developed in single unit dwellings, wherein uses are a mix of single and multi-unit dwellings. The applicant proposes to combine the existing parcel with the court, with a portion of the adjacent Moonstone Court right-of-way, and then split the newly configured by into two separate part, super, two separate parcels, each approximately sixty, or six thousand five hundred square feet. Variants are being inquired to reduce the minimum lot size from seventy-two hundred square feet to sixty-five hundred square feet, and to allow a lot split that results in a parcel smaller than permitted. Planning has no comment on the proposal, and as the Southwest area plan does not deal with the amount of lot splits or minimum lot size, this Division of Traffic Management had no comment. And the Southwest Area Commission recommends approval of the proposed variance voting through one in favor. That are men's approval as the requested uh. Um, it's the quiet, sorry.
Everybody likes the idea a lot, right?
Yeah. Yeah, uh, it's, I'm the right.
Take this, please.
Thank you. Uh, although the Southwest area does not, those lots will be minimal. Uh, lots that the staff are making approval as the variances are necessary to develop the vacant parcel for the construction of two single unit dwellings. Additionally, the proposal aligns with the city's goal of providing more housing and is consistent with development of patterns in the surrounding area. Would you please provide your name and name of the man you've been sworn?
I am Aria Aladeen. I have not been sworn.
I'm Dino Herbert, the architect for the honor, and I have not been sworn.
Who's raised your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you'll provide is the truth to the best of your knowledge and belief, if so, say I do?
I do, I do.
Thank you. So. Walk me through what you're doing.
So the owner um purchased um twenty-three sixteen Turquoise Avenue um earlier um last year. And the current house is in disrepair. And to such a point that they are uh wanting to demolish the building. And realize that Moonstone Court is a vacant right-of-way that had been vacant for years and is not um servicing the neighborhood. As you can see that that court at one point in time was going to connect to another portion of the neighborhood. And as the overall uh suburb develops, they decided not to use Moonstone Court uh as originally intended. So it's kind of a, just a dead end. It is a, uh, when I met with Southwest Area Commission, there was a, a car parked there that they had to get towed. So it's actually a, a bit of an eyesore to the neighborhood. And so uh the owner decided to approach the city about purchasing that portion of the right-of-way. And so um infrastructure management has a six-step process, and so they're halfway through the process. He's made the uh official request. Infrastructure management has done their internal review. They have um sent out the request to other departments, including sewers and drains, including the area commission. Um, they've also sent out a notification to the uh abutting property owners, which is part of their process. They have received a couple minor comments, but no objections. Um, they are at the point where um infrastructure management is ready to send what they call an authorization to proceed to the owner so he can sign that form so they can go to the next step, which is for the, the land, land use commission, I think is what it's called, where they do another review before it goes to council, before it goes to the city attorney to have it created. So he's halfway through the process. He only wants to purchase the right-of-way if he can have this particular variance, which entails the combination of the existing parcel with Moonstone, combining those two and then splitting them into two equal parcels, which are slightly smaller than the SR uh district calls for, seventy-two hundred square feet. These two parcels would be approximately sixty-five hundred square feet. And so that's in, in a nutshell, what the variance is about.
And so those parcels that you're creating, this new size, what are the parcels? What are the majority of parcels around you? How big are they?
Um, the one adjacent that's on the corner is probably point two acres. The ones across the street.
Please, I, I can't, I can't convert acres to square feet.
Um, so, so it's, it's approximately seventy-two hundred. All the other ones are, uh, the ones across the street to the west are slightly smaller than the one that's north of Moonstone.
So you're in the middle? In terms of size?
These two new ones would be the smallest ones.
Okay, so that's what I'm asking. What are the, you're saying everything around you is larger than six thousand square feet?
That is correct. The SR district is, is seventy-two hundred is what the, the um, the zoning code says.
Okay, and I appreciate that that's what the zoning, I'm trying to look at the reality. Oftentimes, the zoning code will say something has to be so large or so small, but it doesn't mean that everything that is in that zoning code, or excuse me, within that zoning district in fact has this. I'm just trying to ascertain, are you creating a nuance here and you're the odd man on the block? Or are you kind of, you know, you're within the range?
To the naked eye, you won't be able to tell that these lots are smaller than the adjacent lots.
Okay, thank you.
Houses that haven't been designed yet can certainly be designed the approximate size of all the, the surrounding residential units.
Okay, I think that becomes important for me. We heard a case earlier this evening where somebody squeezed a house into a lot and, you know, we don't have much information here other than to see, you know, some squares and rectangles on a page. So we would just want to make sure that, I guess it would be code compliant. And some of the things that they were describing about council, that has nothing to do with us. That's about buying that, that they figured out.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And, and one of the reasons I did this particular exhibit is to show that there's no reason that the houses that are built on these two new parcels need to have zoning variances of any size. Anytime. The side yards can be what the current code calls for, the rear yard can be twenty-five percent. He can have a tree in the front yard. We can certainly have two um off-street parking spaces. So there's no reason that houses that are designed here need uh any variances at all.
Okay.
So we're only talking about the slightly smaller parcel.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone, is that on top of this?
I think that's it. Yeah, I think I've said a mouthful.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak for or against this proposal as presented? Yes, sir. Please step forward. If somebody could make room for this gentleman. Would you please provide your name and indicate whether or not you've been sworn?
Uh, my name is Gary Levinge, and I have been sworn.
Okay.
Um, I would oppose this being uh taken uh go, going forward. Um, my property is directly behind this uh the um property, which would be east. So I am actually on Norview Drive.
Can somebody show me where that is?
Yeah, right there. Now this is where I am at.
Okay.
Um, as you can see, I have just that long property behind me. Um, now we're looking at trying to put two properties there. Um, so to me, I bought the property having my neighbor behind me. Now, what I have too, they are also very small properties. Now, what I have too, they are also very small properties. The little, um, drive that they have there, if you look at that particular drive, it's a dead end. The garbage trucks, the delivery trucks, they use that to back in to get back out. If not, I'm not sure how the garbage trucks are going to turn around going down that particular drive. So, these are the things that I can see, and these are my concerns, so I'd like to, uh, propose to, uh, the board here.
Thank you very much. So, uh, we'll let Mr. Flex Schmidt speak to that, but I would say, two questions that I would have for you.
Yes.
What, your property lot doesn't change, um, and you probably have a portion of a lot in the second neighborhood, so to speak. So, is it, do you have underlying concern, other than to have two houses?
Twice as many problems.
Okay. Um, well, I would say to your comment about the, the, uh, garbage or refuse truck backing in or backing out, I think that that'll be fleshed out, uh, when they decide, when the city decides if they need it or not. And, um, they will determine that, and Mr. Flex, would you have any comments?
Yeah, I guess I could just add into that process, so that is part of public service, uh, department of public service, uh, in our division of traffic, or excuse me, infrastructure management. I mean, refuse is one of the divisions that review as part of that process, so I don't have that information in front of me at this moment, but I believe they would be commenting on that, um, and would need to be, uh, taking that, those needs need to take care of before city council would potentially relinquish this city right of way.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
Of course.
You please sign.
I already did.
Okay.
Remind me the size of your lot again, and, and square feet.
Sixty-five hundred square feet.
Sixty-five hundred, so.
And I, and I should, I, if I could, uh, kind of pick it back on what was said here. As part of the purchase process, um, it is my understanding that refuse was one of the city departments that reviewed it from infrastructure management, and they also had an opportunity to comment as part of this variance comment. I even called, uh, Mr. Schumer again and asked him, has refuge commented at all? And as I understand, they did not, they did not have any comments at this point, so, um, uh, it's been my experience on other projects that refuse is not shy about voicing their opinions about things that they want to comment on.
So, for staff, if we, still, we really be approving or disapproving this before it's even available to them?
Well, if I may, sir, uh, the, the, my, our plan to purchase this lot is predicated by the fact that we can build two lot, two houses on it. So, we need this approval before we, we could, you know, agree to purchase. But again, if you approve it, and, and somebody within, you know, the city in, in the steps, I think we're, we're through steps one through three, in steps four, five, six, um, says no, that they don't want to sell this, this lot to, to us, then the, the point is moot. I mean, we can't build two houses on half a lot, so it's, you know.
So.
He's right, uh, another way to frame it is we have heard other projects that are similar, that it's just not a city-owned property that's being purchased. We've heard cases where someone, uh, is in contracts for a property, and we hear cases for variances that applies to that property and the future development of it. So, this really is no different than that, and he is right that if the purchase does then fall through, it's moot point, or propose lots splits to those, you know, the VZA process is part of what is necessary to make that lot split happen.
I don't interpret that this way. I interpret this as this parcel or turquoise can be split into, how big is turquoise now?
Point two acres, sorry.
Don't give it anything.
It's about fifty-five by a hundred.
That does not help here.
Let me do the math.
Do you understand what I'm saying?
But, but.
We have, in the cases that you're describing, the applicant, the owner, is selling a property and, and saying, I'm willing to change the condition of this property for this buyer. That's not what's happening here. So, I need to understand, what is the size of this parcel? Is it, is it seventy-two hundred already?
It's eighty-seven hundred.
It's eighty-seven hundred, so it's already non-compliant.
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two hundred.
What'd you say with eighty-seven?
Eighty-seven twelve.
Eighty-seven twelve, so that's the minimum, seventy-two hundred is the minimum.
Right.
So, if we approve this, we're saying he can take it even smaller, right?
Yeah.
Actually, no. What, what, what we're proposing here is, if we look at the other exhibit, we're, we're not looking to split the current lot, we're looking to split the combined.
Which, while making the comment, you don't have the right to do that. You can only, this is about this parcel and this property. We can't adjudicate somebody else's property, including the city's. That's not within our purview.
You can place the condition that the sale be effectuated in that view, that this variance only applies to the contemplated right-of-way acquisition.
Okay. Um, this is beyond my scope, uh, understanding, so thank you for that. You guys got that?
The contemplated, right?
The condition would be that the right has to be avoided.
Correct.
And, and that's the only reason.
I understand, but I guess I feel like you're at the eightieth or ninetieth yard line with the city and figuring out if you could figure that out.
Yeah, we're kind of, we're at the forty.
Um.
Yeah, because there's after, should this go through, um, when infrastructure sends the authorization to proceed, he signs it, says yes, please proceed. Then, the land use commission, they look at it, and they kick it around, and they decide whether or not it's in the benefit of the city to make this sale. Then, it goes to council, right? Then, well, before it goes to council, infrastructure creates a legislation that goes to council. After council approves it, if they do approve it, then it comes back to the, the city attorney, as I understand it. Then, the city attorney has to create the deed, right? And so, he has to get, um, CC plans approved, right?
It's fine, it's fine.
A lot of infrastructure that has to happen, utilities, public departments will have chances to comment on it. One of the departments wants to put an easement somewhere on the east side of the parcel. And so, we're not anywhere close to the end.
I got it, Chair Jones, the right-of-way acquisition condition will, will indicate your concern.
Perfect, and do you understand that condition that will be considered?
Yes, absolutely. I mean, to us, there's no point in splitting a lot without owning Moonstone.
Okay.
There's no point in splitting that existing lot without adding Moonstone before the split.
Okay, thank you. Any additional questions from board members?
Okay.
Would there be beneficial use without the variance, yes? Is the variance substantial, no? Essential character of the neighborhood altered, arguably no? Uh, government standard or shouldn't the government services affected, it's unknown? Um, knowledge of zoning restriction, yes? Predicament feasibly obviated without variance, yes, because you're creating the predicament? And the spirit and intent, um, would there substantial justice be done by granting the variance? I'd say yes. That being said, would someone like to call the question?
About the question?
Question's been called, please call the role.
Miss Ingle.
With the condition, uh, of question.
Yes.
So, um, I've been, uh, I think the chair did a great job of analyzing, uh, the analysis on Duncan factor, which stays by, but we can be, grant you the variance.
Mr. Blocka?
I concur with the chair as well, and go yes.
Mr. Wildley?
I agree with the chair's analysis and the condition, and go yes.
Mary Jones? Yes, the variance is conditionally approved. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
So, we don't have an opportunity for people to go back and forth with comments, so it sounds like there's another opportunity as to go before city council, if you have any thoughts.
Thank you, appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
VZA two-five dash zero two-seven, or twenty-seven eleven Spangler Road.
I can read my own cases. Uh, VZA twenty-five dash oh-six-seven, or twenty-seven eleven Spangler Road, is located on the west side of Spangler Road, approximately two-hundred forty feet south of Lockton's Road, located in a far south Columbus area commission, and is owned LAR twelve, limited apartment residential districts. The twelve-acre site is currently being built with an attached townhouse-style housing development, strong use to include manufacturing to the west and north, single-unit residential to the north and south, multi-unit residential to the south, and the metro park to the east. The applicant proposes to conform the garages of a recently approved multi-unit townhome development and industrial progress variance to reduce the width of parking spaces in the garage from nine feet to eight and a half feet. This site was subject to two zoning actions, Z oh-three dash zero thirty-three E, which rezoned the property from R one to L A one twelve, and C V oh-five dash oh-six-eight, which reduced development standards for townhouses. Uh, Columbus citywide planning policies recommend the design and character of new development. Including projects should be appropriate based on the principle and nearby structures. Additionally, staff note that the requested variance is minor and technical in nature, therefore supportive. Division of Mass Product Management has no comments. Far south, Columbus area commission recommends approval of requested variance by a vote of seven to zero, and staff recommends approval of requested variance since it is negligible, and projects will still have enough room to fit two parked cars.
Thank you so much. Please provide your name and indicate whether or not you've been sworn.
Rebecca Mott, and yes, I've been sworn.
Thank you, Ms. Mott. You have the recommendation of approval from the city staff, as well as the area commission. Did we hear the area commission? Yeah. Um, is there anything additional that you'd like to add?
Not at this time, I'm just here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone here to speak for or against this proposal as presented? Seeing and hearing none, is there any question from, um, board members? Seeing there are none, according to Duncan standards, will beneficial use without the variance exist? And I would say for this project and this variance, no. Is the variance substantial, no. Is some character of the neighborhood altered for this variance, no. Government services affected, no. Knowledge of zoning restrictions, I can't say was served to that, I would assume so, that it helpful knowledge. Predicament feasibly obviated without the variance, I would say for the overall project and to accomplish what you need for these parking spaces, no. Uh, spirit and intent and substantial justice being done if the grant, if the variances were granted, or if variance was granted, I would say yes. That being said, would someone like to call the question?
About the question?
Question's been called, please call the one.
Mr. Malaka?
I concur with the chair, and go yes.
Mr. Wildley?
I agree, but yes.
Ms. A. Paul?
I would like to concur with the chair, I'd go yes.
Jay Jones?
Very, yes.
Thank you.
VZA two-five dash zero two-eight, or sixty-three twenty-six, Ripken Street?
VZA twenty-five dash oh-six-eight, sixty-three twenty-six, Ripken Street, is located at the northwest corner of Ripken Street and Dairy Avenue. It's located in the far west side of area commission, and is owned P U D four, planning unit, uh, development districts. The three-hundred-and-twenty-five point fifteen plus minus acre site was rezoned in eighteen, one point two hundred and eighteen to the P U D four district with multi-unit residential development, in addition to detached single-unit residential uses on private or public streets. But a setback from B has been established along private streets. The applicant proposes to construct a front porch and request the variance to reduce the building setback from twenty feet to nineteen and a half feet. Fighting has no comment on the applicant's variance proposal to reduce the building setback to nineteen and a half feet, as in.
Is it nineteen and a half or nineteen?
It's nineteen.
Whoever.
Oh, okay, it's nineteen and a half feet, Mr. Chair, yes. It's a six-inch, uh, it's a six-inch encouragement with a front porch, yes, sir.
I'm only asking because I was just saying nineteen, and did the appropriate stuff go out to the.
I do see the nineteen here, likely Jamie, uh, rounded down, because I mean, actually, six feet, or six inches, not six feet.
I'm only concerned legally.
We're good.
I'm good.
Says nineteen, and it's less than what is really being requested.
So, thank you, everyone.
It's more, yeah, so it's a six and seven. Fighting has no comment on the applicant's variance proposal to reduce the building setback to nineteen and a half feet. The Big Darby Accord watershed master plan does not address this matter. Division of Traffic Management has no comments. Far west, uh, side of the area commission recommends approval. Staff can recommend approval, his request is minor, and though the subject is a corner lot, the reduced building line will not affect safe or site distance lines.
Thank you. Would you please provide your name and indicate whether or not you've been sworn?
My name is Molly Gwynn, and I have not been sworn yet, Mr. Chair.
Please, do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you'll provide is the truth to the best of your knowledge and belief, if so say I do?
I do.
Thank you so much. You have the recommendation of approval from the city staff, as well as the area commission. Is there anything additional that you'd like to add?
No, not at this time, Mr. Chair, but happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak for or against this proposal as presented? Is there any question or comment from board members? Or to the Duncan standards? Beneficial use without the variance, the answer is yes. Is the variance substantial, we identify that it is not. Essential character of the neighborhood altered, arguably no. Government services affected, I would say no. Knowledge of zoning restriction, uh, I don't know if they knew this prior to the purchase, but they certainly knew prior to any kinds of modifications of the property. Predicament feasibly obviated without the variance, probably not, but the variance is, or the the predicament is self-created or self-imposed. Spirit and intent of insubstantial justice done by granting the variance, I would argue, yes. That being said, would someone like to call the question?
He'll call the question.
Question's been called, please call the role. Mr. Wildley?
I agree with the chair's analysis and the Duncan factors, and go yes.
Ms. A. Hall?
Likewise, I agree with the chair's analysis, and go yes.
Mr. Malaka?
I concur with the chair, and go yes.
Jerry Jones?
Yes, variance is warranted.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
VZA eight-five dash zero seven-eight, for twenty-eight twenty-eight Yulean Avenue.
VZA twenty-five dash oh-seven-eight, for twenty-eight twenty-eight Yulean Avenue, it's located on the east side of Yulean Road, approximately two-hundred fifteen feet north of Yulean Road. It's located in the far south Columbus area commission, and it's owned R two residential. The one-point-zero-six acre site is built with a single-unit dwelling and detached six-hundred-and-seventy-two square foot garage, strong use to include primary single-unit dwellings. The applicant proposes to raise the existing garage, and construct a nine-hundred square foot garage. Columbus citywide planning policy states that new additions should be designed appropriately based on the principle of nearby structures. Uh, Division of Traffic Management has no comments. The far south Columbus area commission recommends approval of this request. Staff can recommend approval, as the site is developed with a large lot, one-point-zero-six acres, that requires a large, larger garage for storage of larger-than-tip pole lawn and garden equipment.
Would you please provide your name and indicate whether or not you've been sworn?
Been sworn.
Gerald Williams.
Thank you, Mr. White charges. Thank you, Mr. White. You have the recommendation of approval from the city staff, as well as your area commission. Is there anything else you'd like to add for your request?
That was it, just get it built.
Okay, great. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak for or against this proposal as presented? Yes, sir, you'd have to step forward, thank you. Would you please provide your name and indicate whether or not you've been sworn?
My name is Evelyn Williams, and no, I have not been sworn.
Would you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that, that the testimony that you'll provide is the truth to the best of your knowledge and belief, if so say I do?
I do.
Thank you.
I'm for the variance.
You are.
Well, just because I live with him does not mean I'm always, you know, preaching. But in this case, yes, I. But in this case, yes, I am, because, so, and hopefully, this is it as far as any other thing, any other paperwork or money or?
I can't speak to that. I bring everything that came to move you along. We appreciate your patience.
Yes, move us along, because I want, he's in the basement. All of his stuff is in the basement.
Sorry, too.
And the materials and stuff is outside. So yes, please, let's just, I'm for it.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Any questions from board members, comments? Okay. Following the Duncan factors, would there be beneficial use without the variance? Yes. Is the variance substantial? No. Essential character of the neighborhood altered? I would say no. Government services affected? No. Knowledge of zoning restriction, perhaps not prior to the purchase, but certainly before the project was, was started. The predicament feasibly obviated without the variance? The answer is no, as the variance is self-imposed. Spirit and intent and substantial justice done with granting the variance? I would argue yes. That being said, would someone like to call the question?
I'll call the question.
Question's been called. Please call the roll. Ms. Agaloff?
I agree with the chair's analysis of the Duncan factors and vote yes.
Mr. Malika?
I agree with the, uh, chair of the set and vote yes.
Mr. Wildley?
I concur and vote yes.
Chair Jones? Yes, the variance is correct.
Thank you.
Get him out of place inside. Commit it north form while.
Big trip. We, we did it.
Thank you so much. VCA two-five dash zero-nine-zero? For one ninety-one Long King Lane?
Yes.
Uh, one ninety-one Long King Lane is located on the northwest side of Long King Lane, approximately a hundred and sixty feet east of Insoon Drive, is on L R two residential and part of the Columbus area commission. The twenty-five acre site with both a single unit dwell, showing this is our primary single unit dwell. Actin proposes to construct a roof over an existing deck. The variance is being requested to reduce the choir rear yard, twenty-five just one, shooting every two minutes, but it's a whole block area. Putting support to the proposal as presented. Uh, P two notes that the design and character of new development, including additions, should be appropriate and based on the principle of nearby structure, internal hardwood setbacks, lock covered roof pitch, and other. As, uh, the, the proposal is consistent with C two P two design guidelines, planning supports, uh, as presented. The division of traffic management has no comment, and the far east area commission with the minutes of approval, with a vote of eight to zero. Staff can recommend approval as the regular shape, shape of the lot resulted in a rear yard that does not comply with current requirements, providing only twenty per, twenty-three percent of the lot area. The proposed deck does not significantly alter this, uh, in our performing condition. And the proposal is consistent with the scale and character of the shawing.
So to be clear, the deck insists.
Yeah, that, that's allowed. Once you put a roof over it, it becomes a structure. And then that's what's basically taken away from the rear yard. Currently, with, um, even since the deck's not, like, considered part of the rear yard, the rear yard only has twenty-two percent, like, just the way, the, the way the lot is sitting. So it's already.
The deck is.
No, the backyard in general.
Gotcha. So I mean, again, we're not, we're just looking at putting the roof on the deck.
Correct.
Ceiling, whatever. And thank you very much. Would you please provide your name and indicate whether or not you've been sworn?
Sure. Uh, my name is Gary James, and you've sworn.
Who's Greg James?
Uh, Daniel Stone.
You're the owner of the home?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And you know, whatever decision we make, if you have an HOA, they still have the right to say you can or cannot put a roof over your deck.
Yes, sir. They've already approved it.
Great. Do you have the recommendation of approval from the city staff as well as your area commission? Is there anything additional that you'd like to add?
No, sir. I'm just answering any questions you may have.
Okay. Do the last one here. So I'm assuming nobody from the audience wants to speak for or against this proposal. Any questions or comments from our board members?
Did you get approvals from your wife?
I did. I wouldn't be here.
So we'll move to the Duncan standards. Would beneficial use, would you have beneficial use without the variance? Yes. Is the variance substantial? No. Essential character of the neighborhood altered? No, um, no more so than the debt has already created. Government services affected? No, because it's on private property. Knowledge of zoning restriction? I would assume if she had no knowledge, that she would not compliant with the art.
We didn't know.
So predicament feasibly obviated without the variance? No. Uh, spirit and intent and substantial justice done if we were to grant the variance? I would say yes. That being said, would someone like to call the question?
I'll call the question.
Question's been called. Please call the roll. Mr. Malika?
I concur with the chair and vote yes.
Mr. Wildley?
I agree and vote yes.
Ms. Agaloff?
I agree with the chair's analysis and vote yes.
Chair Jones? I vote yes. Your variance is guaranteed.
All right. Thank you.
Guys, we've talked for the next twenty-five minutes tonight. I weren't billion for it. We'll send you there for my order.
So.
We'd like to have that.
Four orders.
Well, you'll give that to, uh.
I'll send you after that. Absolutely, like.
See you, sir.
All right. See you next month. You too. Thank you again. Thank you. All right. Thank you. Of course.
Ah.
I'm sworn.
Was Jamie watching?
Not sure. Again, same thing. Shannon was watching, uh, dreaming, re- front street.